Welcome, everybody. Today is January 12th. This is the Board of Supervisors meeting. Let's go ahead and does anybody have a moment of silence for today? And I'll just speak frankly that I think it's been a difficult past week for everybody. Between the tensions of COVID-19 with the rise of cases. And unfortunately, the rise of hospitalization and the rise of deaths occurring because of COVID-19. And the unfortunate rise of conflict politically in our country. I think it's good for us to reflect on how we talk to one another, how we treat one another, and what democracy really means for all of us. And so I'd like to take a minute to just reflect on. Supervisor Pasca, would you lead us to the pledge allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. Are there any extra items being requested by staff or board members?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seeing none, let's go ahead and move on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone wishes to pull, any board members wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open it up to the public. Is there any items that the public wishes to pull for discussion from the consent agenda? Jake, if we can go ahead and open up the Zoom room?
Yep, all right. I sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
All right, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda items 5.1 through 5.12.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to Johanna. If we have a roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Pasca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Perfectly timed.
Yes. We love those voices.
All right, let's go ahead and move on. We are 9:07, so we're on time here. Let's go to item 6.1, public input. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on any items that are not on our agenda, you would have three minutes to address the board in which we cannot respond to you since it is not on the agenda. Is there anybody in the Zoom room from the public that wishes to make a comment?
I have sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Thank you, Jake. And then I do see that we did receive a public comment via email. It has been posted on our agenda and is available to the public. I know that we were all recipients of that email as well, so we all got it. Hearing none from the public, let's go ahead and move on to item 6.2. And we're a little early on that. Let's see if there's an easy one. Let's go ahead and do item 7.4, consideration of the following advisory board appointments. Spring Valley CSA Number Two Advisory Board.
Yes, Mr. Chair. I, if I could, I would like to apologize to your board for staff's confusion last week. There it was not clear as to whether we were recommending you appoint members to the CSA or, or to the Spring Valley CSA Two Advisory Board. It is indeed an advisory board, and it is appropriate to make these appointments of Edward Smith, Joe Welts, and Helen Mitchum, or I should say at least to consider them. The prior appointments did expire January 1st.
Very much for that report. Any discussion, comments, or questions from the board? Okay, seeing none. Jake, we open the room again and ask if there's any public comment for item 7.4 regarding Spring Valley CSA Advisory Board.
All right, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Edward Smith, Joe Wells, and Helen Mitchum for reappointment for the CSA Two Board Advisory Board. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Johanna, please roll call.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Pasca.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you much. Let's go ahead and go back to item 6.2 or 9:10 a.m. Item Lakeport Armory/ Clear Lake Property Land Swap Proposal Update and Direction to Ms. Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator McGuire will be joining us for this item, and he's just advising that he will be joining us at 9:15. So again, if you could take up another brief item while we await the senator, that would be wonderful.
Go ahead and do that. Let's do item 7.1, Supervisors' Calendar, Travel, and Reports. And let's start, let's start with Supervisor Scott.
Good morning. Today, after the meeting, I have a 4 o'clock ad hoc committee. Tomorrow, I have an 8 a.m. pit count meeting. We're still, we have two more weeks left for our pit count. So if you would like to volunteer, we need you to take a training class. You can give me a call if you're looking to help count our homeless on the 28, 849-4414. And then at 2 o'clock, I have a meeting with the City of Lakeport. And then 3 p.m. on the 13th, looking over the CAN grant applications. On the 14th, I have a Department Head meeting at 1:00. And another meeting at 2:30. I didn't label it properly. I don't know what it is. And then doing the sex trafficking training at 4:00. And that looks pretty much clear. Because we don't have a meeting next Tuesday. Wednesday, again, the 20th, another 8 a.m. pit count survey meeting. And then Lake County Continuum of Care meeting on the 21st. And then back here on the 26th.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Scott. Supervisor Pasca?
Yes, good morning. I am starting all of my department head orientations, so I'm booked pretty solid with those tomorrow morning. There is a pit count meeting that I may be able to attend finally. I'm not sure if there's still a zone of benefit meeting at 10 a.m. And then I have orientations with Susan Cronis and then Richard Ford. And then a cavern check-in in the afternoon, I mean, sorry, in the evening. The EOC call Thursday morning, then the orientation with IT and an orientation with Director Ewing. Friday, I have an orientation with Gerhart, then Crystal Marketan, then Jonathan Armus. Monday, I have my weekly meeting with Carol, a Hope Rising orientation. The Risk Reduction Authority, that, I think that's still on my calendar, but that's not the right meeting. I think that's the
It's been moved to the 25th.
Yeah, I think it's just still hanging out on my calendar. And then, because there's no meeting, the fall on the 20th, I have orientation with Barbara Ringen, then Gail Woodworth, then Scott DeLeon, and another cavern check-in that evening. Thursday, I have orientation with Brian Martin. There's going to be a CAC meeting, Cooperative Council meeting, that evening that I will attend. Then Friday, the 22nd, orientation with Christopher Beach. And another orientation with Scott Harder. And then on the 25th, a meeting with PG&E. And I think that's it right now.
Good way to start. Supervisor Simon.
Yeah, Board of Supervisors meeting today. And then afterwards, I have an ad hoc committee meeting with Supervisor Scott for Carol. And then tomorrow, have the Lake Transit Area Planning Council meeting was canceled for this month. So we have the search planning meeting, call that I've been attending, and then a space committee meeting in the afternoon. On Thursday, the EOC call in the morning, in the afternoon, a special department head meeting. And then in the evening, I have the Middletown Area Town Hall. Friday morning, I'll be on KPFC in the morning on the 15th for a little bit of an interview there. And then obviously, holiday on the 18th, no meeting on the 19th. Moving to the 20th, I have LAFCO from 9:30, or LAFCO in the morning. And then abandoned vehicle abatement in the afternoon. On the 21st of the EOC call, 22nd, we have an RDA meeting, the first one of the year will be happening on the 22nd. On the 25th, oh, lost my date here. 25th, I have a meeting with Carol, have COVID Recovery Group meeting, and also the Risk Reduction Authority meeting, then back here on the 26th.
All right, thank you very much. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, so today, of course, Supervisors meeting tomorrow. I have the RC, RC Board in the morning. And then also, we have the economic, oh, no, not, I think it is the Economic Development Task Force. Yes, there it is. Yeah. And that's at 10:00 to 11:30, so I'll be doing kind of both. Then back to that. I have also the, to review the ICAN grants, so the cannabis grants, at 4:00. And then we have the Installation of Officers meeting in the evening for RCRC. So I'll be at that as well. Thursday, I have, I have a meeting with the constituent out in Clear Lake Oaks. And I'll be kind of tending to a couple, try to set up a couple of things to do out there to make sure I can, you know, get, get some people's concerns met. Friday, I have concerns in Lucerne that I'll be dealing with. Of course, next week, there's no meeting. Kind of open on Thursday, I have the Governing Board. I'm not sure, I don't, I don't know if I'm still on the triple. I think I am on the AAA as well. So I guess Tina and I will figure out who's going to that. And then the 25th, meeting with the CAO, and back here on the 26th for the board meeting.
Just, you know, EJ, I'm no longer your alternate, I believe. Supervisor Pasca is.
Okay, so I, I think I, I'm not sure if I'm the alternate or not, but either way, we'll work it out and figure out who's there, so.
All right, thank you for your report, Supervisor Crandall. So same with me, the LTAAPC had been canceled. Therefore, I'm going to be able to join the RCRC. So please make sure to do what you need to do for the Economic Development Committee, Supervisor Crandall, because I can definitely take care of the RCRC meeting 100%. Again, also later on that evening, there is the board installation, the new board members for RCRC. Just to be transparent, I said no to them sending me a bottle of wine to celebrate with them from my house. That was a very strange option to take. But I'll be happy to join them and celebrate the board members, cheer them on, and see where we go this year. They've been very helpful. Last week, we talked about the pressure-treated wood. RCRC has definitely been on the forefront of that and has definitely been helpful in finding out ways for rural communities to deal with COVID-19, even generating the small population counties and getting a different guideline for that. So appreciate what they do for us. Starting off with an EOC call, joining a PG&E Public Safety meeting later, and then having a state phone call with CSAC. I am also joining a CPUC meeting on Friday. The State of California just came out with the new S-GIP program, self-generating incentive program. And so I want to learn as much as possible so we can put out that information to the public. I sure hope that they have changed some of the criteria. The last energy consultant I spoke with said that the majority of that program's funds went to seasonal homes or second able to take care of the electricity during a PSPs. Well, I'm sure they need help, and I'm sure there's other priorities as well. So I'll be listening in and seeing what I can learn from that program. Later on, on Tuesday, I don't have it on here yet, but I believe that we have a small business meeting happening on Tuesday, the 19th. Also, a CSAC call that I missed, that's happening on Monday. LAFCO meeting on Wednesday, AVA, same as Supervisor Simon. And then I'll be joining the City of Clear Lake for a marketing committee, which I'm really proud of the work that's happening over there, the amount of art installations. We know we've seen it in Lakeport, it's happening in Clear Lake. And they're also aiming for a $100,000 grant with Rural Arts Initiative to be able to bring a lot of sculptures and a lot of other art to the city of Clear Lake. And I'm really excited about that. Back on Thursday for EOC meeting, a CSAC call, City of Clear Lake Council meeting. Nothing so far on that Friday. And then starting again on the following Monday with COVID recovery, meeting with our CAO, CSAC phone call, and then here in the, here for a meeting on Tuesday, the 26th, for the Board of Supervisors. And that will be my report for my calendars. And it looks like we have Senator McGuire.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, my, yes, I did miss the Economic Development Task Force meeting tomorrow, so I will be at that meeting. I just skipped over it on the calendar, just wanted to confirm that.
Thank you. Perfect. And let's go ahead and move on back to item, my computer just went down. I believe it was 6.3? Was it 6.2 or 6.3?
Mr. Chair?
And that's for and that's for the land between the armory and the property that the county owns on 18th Avenue in the city of Clear Lake. And we do have Senator McGuire, our representative from the State of California, here with us to discuss this item. I'll go ahead and start with Ms. Hutchinson to start it off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pretty excited to be presenting this project to you today. Staff has had the good fortune for the last two years to work on this project, spearheaded by Senator McGuire. We have all of the partners involved in this project present here today and who will speak very briefly on the project as well. So in addition to Senator McGuire, we have Jason Kenny from the Department of General Services. We have Josh Palmer from Housing and Community Development. We have Brian Martin, and we have Alan Flora, the City Manager of Clear Lake. So Senator, I'll let you take it away. Thank you.
Well, good morning, Madam County Administrator. Good morning, Mr. Chair, and to the entire Board of Supervisors. Happy New Year. I thank you so much for allowing me to be able to be with you. It's two meetings in a row, which I'm thrilled about. And just so appreciative of the effort that went into getting us to where we're at today. I want to send a thank you. A thank you to your board, Mr. Chair, and to your amazing county administrator for the incredible partnership over the past 24 months to be able to get close to the finish line on this project. I want to say thank you to Sheriff Martin, who has been 100%, 100% in his teamwork to be able to get us here today. And of course, to Jason Kenny, the Deputy Director for the Department of General Services, just being candid. It has been through his innovative thinking to be able to get us close to the finish line as well. Mr. Kenny, thank you so much. And of course, Mr. Flora from the city of Clear Lake, thank you so much. Mr. City Manager, for your incredible partnership. And Rebecca Waxburg, who is in our office, thank you so much, Rebecca. We are grateful to be with you in this new year. And let's be perfectly honest, Mr. Chair, we all need a little bit of hope in our lives right about now. We have seen significant challenges with the pandemic, with civil unrest, and of course, the insurrection that we saw in Washington, D.C. last week. And we believe that this potential project will do just that. Provide hope, economic development, and a desperately needed solution for the Lake County Sheriff's Office and a new headquarters. And we're going to be presenting today this initial briefing that will usher in a desperately needed move of the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the building of approximately 100 new homes, 100 new affordable housing units in the city of Clear Lake, adjacent to the city's largest shopping center, and of course, the hospital. A coordinating group, as you heard County Administrator Hutchinson say, a coordinating group has been meeting for nearly two years on this project. It has two different key components. I'd like to address each. First and foremost, starting with the Lakeport Armory and the Lake County Sheriff's Office. And then, Mr. Chair, if it works for you, I'd like to briefly discuss the second component of this project, which will be the 100-unit buildout of homes in Clear Lake. So what we've known is this. For many years, the County of Lake and the Lake County Sheriff's Office has had an interest of moving its headquarters into the state-owned armory. What we needed to be able to do to make this work, because the price tag of the armory was so expensive, I've come up with an innovative approach to be able to secure the location of the armory for the sheriff's office. And this is what this proposal will do. First and foremost, it's going to transfer ownership of the state's armory located on the same campus of the Lake County Jail and the Emergency Operations Center in Lakeport to the County of Lake and the Lake County Sheriff's Office. This transfer of ownership will accomplish two key objectives. Number one, it's going to move the sheriff's office to the campus, which will be strategically significant for sheriff operations. Having the office on the same campus of the jail and the county emergency operations center will have truly important operational efficiencies. And the move will provide the sheriff's office a new headquarters that, well, candidly, doesn't leak, doesn't have challenges with the foundation, and has some key elements, including a commercial kitchen, locker rooms, a vault, and significant storage. Again, this has been a vision of Sheriff Martin and your board, moving the sheriff's office to the armory for many years now. And I can't say thank you enough to Sheriff Martin for his key partnership on this project, along with the California Military Department and the Department of General Services to be able to make this transfer work. And again, we would not be here without the good work of the sheriff. Now, to be able to close a final deal on the armory, rather than the county having to spend money to acquire the land and the building, we had to be able to develop an innovative approach, which is why we're coming to you today with the idea of a land swap. And the closing on the armory at no cost to the county to be able to purchase is dependent on the land swap for the housing development. So the keys of the armory could be turned over to Sheriff Martin and the county later this spring. We'll have more from the sheriff on this proposal in just a few minutes. But I'd like to transition to the 15-acre property in the city of Clear Lake owned by the County of Lake. In exchange for transferring ownership of the armory to the county, the state has struck a deal with your board, with the county administrator, to deal, to develop the 15 acres in Clear Lake for affordable housing. Since 2015, we know that Lake County has seen 60% of its landmass burned by wildfire. It's lost 5.5% of its housing stock, as you all well know. And there's a massive need for housing across the county, but especially on the corridor of Clear Lake, Lower Lake, and Middletown. This 15-acre parcel is located adjacent to the city's largest shopping center, where Walmart is located. And it's tucked in between the hospital. It is a fantastic location for affordable housing. It's close to services, it's connected to public transit, it's right adjacent to the hospital. It's near Woodland Community College's Clear Lake campus. And you couldn't ask for a more central buildout. We also know that there is a massive need for more housing due to the fires. And this development will be a huge shot in the arm for housing stock for the county. And let's be honest, it's going to be a shot in the arm for our spirits. And this development will have a significant economic development component, both during the buildout for supplies and workers and for the surrounding merchants long term when it comes to sales tax generation. So let's talk about the next steps to be able to make this swap work. Swapping the armory for the 15 acres, the state will take control of the 15 acres in a 99-year lease to be able to build out the nearly 100, 100 units of housing. So here's what we've done, and here's where we're at. Number one, the state has already sent out a request for interest of potential developers for the 15-acre site. We have had three significant housing, affordable housing developers express interest in the site. So once we had the interest, now we've gone to the formal request for proposal. That process is happening even as we speak. We expect a preferred affordable housing developer to be selected by the State of California for that 15-acre site in the next 60 to 90 days. We believe that construction could potentially start on that site depending on funding allocation in 2022 or 2023. This is a huge win, by the way. This is a win because initially, the county couldn't afford to be able to purchase the site for the armory to be able to move the sheriff's office into the armory. This is a huge win because not only is this the county not having to put out the money to purchase the armory, the state, in return for giving the county the armory, the county will then transfer, transfer for 99 years, the lease to the state to be able to build the units on the site next to services. This swap is exactly what we need right now in 2021. And this is going to provide desperately needed housing and, of course, increase sales tax for the city of Clear Lake. Finally, Mr. Chair, and then I'll turn it over to you to be able to hear if it's all right from Deputy Director, Mr. Kenny, Jason Kenny, from the Department of General Services in the state, to be able to fill in any items that I may have missed. This would not have been possible without your board. Your board has really been the visionary to be able to help drive this. This would not have happened without the Clear Lake City Council to be able to help drive this and making sure that we're able to strike this deal. This would not have happened without Carol Hutchinson and Sheriff Martin, Alan Flora, and of course, the partnership from the Department of General Services. And, Mr. Chair, I just want to say thank you personally for your engagement on this. I know this has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of wrinkles that we had to work out. But we are very close to be able to put the final seal of approval on this land swap, get the sheriff's office the keys, and to be able to start turning dirt in Clear Lake here in the coming months. And, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to you. And then if it's all right with you, sir, being able to turn it over to the Deputy Director from the Department of General Services, Mr. Jason Kenny.
I say let's go ahead and go straight to Mr. Kenny, and let's see what he's got to say on this. Thank you very much for being here with us.
Oh, my pleasure. Thank you for letting me come and present. I think Senator McGuire really nailed the high points. A couple of things I think would be useful to add, and I do also want to echo his thanks. When Governor Newsom issued one of his executive orders, N619 was one of his first executive orders when he took office back in 2019, and housing was foremost on his agenda. This is the sort of property deal that that executive order, I think, really contemplated. It addresses a significant need in an area that is fire-scarred, that has housing needs, that needs help, that's rural. I mean, it touches a number of different boxes, but it also is innovative. We did have to get additional legislative authority to make this deal work. And thanks to legislature for giving us that in the last budget cycle. And so, you know, legally, the Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. But I would also say too, I think that had this not been brought up by Senator McGuire's office, by the county, by the sheriff, this deal would never have happened. When we looked at statewide property across the state, we were looking at, you know, what sites that we owned that were viable for housing. And our military armory just really isn't per se. And the site that has been proposed is, has the exact sort of adjacencies and location that we really are looking forward, are looking for in housing sites. And so the synergy And so the synergy has been fantastic here. To Senator McGuire's point, we are in our final solicitation. We will have proposals in next month. Technically, they're due on February 26th. We've got three very qualified developers who are aiming for the site. And we have extended an invitation to both the city and the county to participate in that evaluation process. And so looking forward to sort of working with your staff and with city staff on really kind of digging in, making sure that the development that is selected is the one that, you know, meets the state's goals, but is of the right time and place and context and benefits the community to the maximum extent possible. So we're excited. Really interesting to see what the proposals come back with in February and hoping for a really good response.
I appreciate your help on this, Mr. Kenny. It's definitely an exciting project, probably one of the biggest developments in the city of Clear Lake in a long time. And I know that the sheriff has been excited. It's been a while since my initial meeting with all of you at Pogo's Pizza, when we actually could meet together. And it's exciting to see this coming to the board today. Ms. Hutchinson, would you like to start us off before we go to Sheriff Martin and then City Manager Alan Flora?
Mr. Chair, I think we're just ready to go straight to the sheriff and then to the city manager.
All right, Sheriff Martin.
Good morning. Yes, so many moving parts on this. There's no way we could possibly thank everybody but some major players and people that really were proponents of this, who include yourself, the Board of Supervisors, of course, Senator McGuire, Madam CAO, Susan Parker's continuing to work with me on ways to get some funding so we can get this thing up to a working facility for us. I just can't possibly thank everybody enough. This is a facility that we're really looking forward to moving into. The facility that we're in right now is quite dated. I think many, many years ago, the CAO had her office there, and it was probably pretty old and outdated then. So we don't, we can't kind of hobble it.
The building or the CAO?
No, the building. No, way back when you're in kindergarten. So we've hobbled it along. We've done some improvements around the exterior and in the interior, but it's really, it's really not a suitable place for a law enforcement facility, while the armory clearly is. I first became aware of this when I got word that the National Guard unit was going to consolidate and vacate the location. So we want to jump on it quick. It's quite, quite a good opportunity for us. When we first started dealing with these disasters and activated the EOC out there, one of the many, many challenges that we had was not having co-location of resources, staff, and personnel with the EOC. So we would lose quite a bit of time in trying to find the right people or the right resources. And having the sheriff's administrative office right there where the EOC is is going to help in some of those situations. Part of our plans include having some wildfire resiliency. We're going to have some training areas out there. Where in addition to the regular law enforcement training, we're going to have some wildland fire response training courses that we're going to hopefully put on there for law enforcement officers within the county. And looking forward to a place where the sheriff's office can be called it a home for many, many years. Again, just want to close out by saying thank you. I know we're not done yet, but this is a major step in getting there. And hopefully, we'll, you know, in the not-too-distant future, we'll be able to call that the new sheriff's office home for Lake County.
Definitely exciting. Thank you very much. Mr. Flora, City Manager for City of Clear Lake, would you like to speak on this?
Sure. Thank you, Sheriff Sabatier and Board Member. So yeah, I don't have much to add. I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone. I think this has been a great example, a real collaborative project between all the parties. You know, we don't always agree on all the issues, but this is one thing that we're all really working hard together on. There's been great engagement with all the county staff and DGS. Mr. Palmer, Mr. Kenny have both been amazing. So we're looking forward to a great project, but, you know, Senator McGuire thanked pretty much everyone already, but, you know, if it wasn't for your leadership and commitment to making sure this happened, you know, you've refused to, you know, let anything slip on this, really kept us all on a timeline and have used your influence to make sure that this happens and that the various state agencies paid attention to this project. And so just really want to thank you on behalf of the city for everything you've done here. Really excited to just continue, continue the momentum that we have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flora. Yeah, I do appreciate that we didn't take no for an answer on the first idea of how we could utilize the armory, and we got into some innovative conversations to get to where we are today with the land swap idea. I know that it's very appreciated from my perspective with a very biased opinion, since District 2 absolutely could use some new housing stock. Our housing stock definitely needs to be upgraded, and we need more. So I think every district could probably speak the same way, but it's exciting to have that happening, especially there's one other option or one other development that's happening somewhat simultaneously, and that's the big bus depot that will be happening right across from the courthouse and the college and KEC out there. And all of that coming together is just a perfect situation and a perfect concept. Any board members have any comments or questions on this side? Ms. Hutchinson, let's start with you.
Yes, if you, let me just kind of wrap up the presentation part of the discussion, and then we welcome your questions and comments, and those of the public as well. To say that this project team is enthusiastic, I think, would be an understatement. Again, we've been so fortunate to have Senator McGuire taking the lead on this. He's an extraordinary force to work with, as we all know. And what we are seeking at the end of this discussion is direction from your board to authorize county staff to take all the steps to seal the deal. And of course, we would need the guiding hand of our county council in those processes. And so we'll just thank her in advance for the support we hope to get from her through all of that. So thanks for letting us present, and we're excited.
Yeah, very exciting. Any comments from board members, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I just want to comment on everybody's great work on this project. Not only what has been explained today, the benefits for the county, the sheriff's department, and the city of Lake, Clear Lake, for all the housing opportunities that are going to be coming our way with this transfer and the new, obviously, business opportunities for the sheriff are great things. But it's ultimately also going to benefit the entire county. It'll give us an opportunity to look at different office spaces and opportunities for different departments. I think it'll open up some other spaces, and I think that's a huge benefit. For years, we've talked about here in the Lake County our limitations, and now this would just give us one more opportunity with, without having to build anything, at least on our side, on the county side, and the simple land swap for us to have other opportunities here to serve our constituents better. So I think that's just phenomenal work by everyone. When I first came on the Board of Supervisors, I know this was already being worked on, but I just want to thank everyone for their tenacity and their hard work to get it to this point. The other thing that Supervisor Sabatier, myself and him said on the Lake LTA and the APC, the transit hub that is going to be built there in the future just gives us a great opportunity. Now, I just think it's a perfect fit for the quality of life that we're looking for. You know, you can walk directly from your home, get your transportation done, and all those other things, including the college, the hospital, and everything in the area. So it's a great program. Hopefully, there'll be a lot more of those coming over the next decade, but it's a great step forward. So I just want to thank everybody for their hard work and proud to be able to vote on this when it gets to the floor and we continue this process. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Pyska?
So this is so exciting, and I'm so grateful to be a part of it. I do have one question about the development for the housing. What kind of mix of units are we looking at right now, or has that been considered yet?
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kenny. I'll just say that that's part of the request for proposal is we're waiting to see what the developer will be recommending, then we'll need to be able to get into direct engagement with the developer, the city, the county on that mix. But, Mr. Kenny, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you Supervisor so much. It's good to have you on the board. It's wonderful to see you. Mr. Kenny, please.
Sure, yeah. We are definitely open to what's proposed. Ultimately, the leasing authority that the state operates under does set certain minimum thresholds. And so at least by statute, half of the units must be affordable, 12.5% at very low, 12.5% at low, and 25% at moderate. And so as long as they meet those minimums, they can flex any way they want to. It will depend on the populations that they choose to serve and the funding cycles they seek. But generally speaking, for our developments, we are seeing developers come in with close to, if not entirely, affordable developments, and usually a pretty healthy mixture of both the affordability range, as well as, you know, one-bedroom to three-bedroom units.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kenny. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Scott?
I don't have any questions, but to say that Senator McGuire works hard for us is a complete understatement. He is absolute firecracker, and we are very fortunate to have him working for us. So I'm excited to have this project move forward. It's going to definitely benefit everybody here in Lake County. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Supervisor. Very grateful. Honored to work with you.
Supervisor Crandall? Oh, you can't unmute. There you go.
Eric, can you hear me now? So I just want to say, you know, again, I, you know, I want to thank Senator McGuire. I remember in our orientation with Sheriff Martin, Bruno, you and myself, we remember talking about this and seeing this come to fruition, having a meeting with you in Sacramento discussing this project potentially at that time, and then seeing all of you work together with, you know, the city of Clear Lake and all the other key players. Just to see something come to fruition, give us another opportunity. And now that I'm on the Space Committee, it gives us a chance to, like Supervisor Simon had stated, you know, to move some people around and have our resources better established in the county so we can be more efficient. So thank you for your help, and thank you, everyone, for the work on this project. And I know there's still a lot to go, a lot to do, but we'll get there. Thank you again.
Thank you, Supervisor. And, Mr. Chair, if it's all right with you and through the chair, I think this is what Lake County is all about. When challenges are in our way, we all rally to be able to develop innovative solutions and advance those. And as you said in the beginning, Mr. Chair, not take no for an answer. We know we need housing in this county. We know this housing will bring economic development to the city of Clear Lake. We know that the sheriff's office has been needing desperately a new headquarters. And today, in front of you, after incredible collaboration, we're here. And we're just about to finish, we're just about to cross the finish line. And the last piece, I'll say, this is going to be the first rural development in this housing program that's been advanced by the Department of General Services. The Department of General Services has been very focused on urban, understandably, and it's just as important. We have just as much, if not more, need per capita for housing in rural California, and especially in Lake County because of the fires. And I just want to say again, Mr. Chair, thank you, your board, the sheriff, the county administrator, the city of Clear Lake, for the advocacy, and for Mr. Kenny, who is here. He's incredibly modest, but he has worked through some challenges, to say the least, to be able to get us to where we're at today with the department. And I just want to say how grateful I am to him, truly, as well as Rebecca Waksberg and Taylor Morrison from our office, who have been dealing with a lot of the details, and to your county administrator, Ms. Hutchinson, and her pooch, who is there with her today. I just want to say thank you so much, and we look forward, look at that. Very excited. As you can tell, the dog is thrilled about this move. But thank you, and we can't wait to be able to have that groundbreaking ceremony for both the sheriff's office getting them moved in, as well as getting these homes built. And it will be 100% partnership along the way. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate that, and also it helps everyone understand what happens in the background to get to the final destinations that we all aim to get to. And just to add to that, in 2014, I think it was, the Board of Supervisors were expressing their want to get veteran housing built on that piece of property, I believe using Proposition 61 or Proposition 64 funds, and it never went through. And again, no one gave up. We just found another way to make something happen, and here we are. It's going to happen. And I'm going to plant a seed in everybody's heads here, not just those who are part of the process, but also the public. This is an opportunity zone. And the addition of housing, the addition of a bus depot, the additions of what else the city of Clear Lake is working on for development, to me, it is an absolute catalyst to getting more people interested in developing commercial, to doing commercial developments in that region, which is prime for that kind of development. So I'm excited that the state sees it as an opportunity because I think it will unleash that many more opportunities for that region, and I'm looking forward to the years ahead. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public and see if there's any public comment, questions for this item. Jake, if we can open up the Zoom room, please.
All right. I have sent out a unmute request to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
I guess everyone is speechless and excited about the project. We'll go ahead and close down the public comments and bring it back to the board. I know that Ms. Hutchinson is just looking for direction to continue with the process for putting this into surplus. I did have a question because I think it's on an aside. I believe that there's some work that needs to be done on the armory prior to the sheriff being able to move in. Just kind of wondering what that timeline might look like for us to understand what the potential costs are. Sheriff Martin?
So we, the timeline is probably going to be, it's probably going to be a couple of year project, I'm guessing. We met with the Public Services Director yesterday, Lars Juwings, to go take a walk through, to kind of get an idea. It's going to be a significant project to get that to the shape that we need it to be in. Obviously, there's going to be questions about funding sources. I've kind of been very frugal with the Rural Sheriff's Fund. I mentioned Susan Parker a little bit earlier, and we're trying to find some creative ways to use some grants that are available for wildfire resiliency. But we're anticipating that this will probably be a one- to two-year project to get it to go through all the processes, to get the bids in, to get the designers in, to make it a suitable facility. There's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go in. Fortunately, the connectivity for any information systems is not going to be very difficult with us having the public safety dispatching, our public safety answering point up there. But as far as putting everything together, we're anticipating it's going to be quite a long project.
Look forward to seeing that coming to us. Any other questions or comments from the board? And I'm guessing from the previous comments that everyone is approving the direction of going ahead and setting up the property for surplus and to continue forward with the land swap.
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, Senator McGuire.
Thank you. Very exciting.
Very. Have a wonderful day, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I do appreciate the words of Senator McGuire. That does put hope when we see such large change and such actions being taken here. Looking forward to those things coming to reality. Moving on to item 6.3, our 945 item. Hope Rising Partners update regarding projects in progress for making Lake County a healthy place for every person to live, learn, engage, and thrive. And Supervisor Scott, you sponsored this, and I know that Allison Pinella is also here with us as well.
Yes, and we actually have quite a few other partners that will be speaking today as this is a collaborative that we have here in Lake County. And, you know, we're bringing Lake, our Hope Rising, here with us this morning because we want to demonstrate all the projects that we're working on and our progress and just to, you know, keep the board aware of what's going on here in Lake County and all the great, amazing work that's going on. So I would like to start with Allison Pinella, and I know she's going to be sharing her screen, and then she'll direct who will be speaking next. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for having us here today. Let me just give myself a second. I can't, it seems as though I can't do two things at once. So let me try to share my screen first, and then I'll start presenting. Having some issues here. Are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
Awesome. Again, thank you for having us here today. Co-presenting with me today are my highly regarded colleagues, Todd Metcalf, Director of Lake County Behavioral Health Services and Hope Rising Board Member, along with Pastor Shannon Kimballath, Adventist Health Clear Lake Manager of Community Integration, as well as the Manager of Hope Center. Hope Rising began convening a little bit over six years ago. We are a coalition where county health leaders, nonprofit organizations, and other relevant organizations of Lake County lead a joint effort leveraging our resources and influence to improve the overall health and wellness of Lake County. Individually, we have partnered for many years on a wide variety of health improvement initiatives. Hope Rising is the formalization of those partnerships to increase impact relentlessly to improve the health and wellness of our community. Hope Rising is bigger than any one person, organization, or leader. Our board chooses not to march to the beat of its own drum, rather has chosen a path set forth, laid out by our community. Through our Community Health Needs Assessment, Information Gathering, Key Informant Interviews, Focus Groups, Surveys, and our County Health Ranking, Hope Rising works to identify, Hope Rising works to identify Lake County's greatest health disparities and addresses innovative solutions to tackle real issues for real people in our community. Hope Rising, Lake County, has launched Lake Hope SafeRx Lake County in 2015, an opioid reduction coalition where we've worked together cross-agency to reduce substance misuse in Lake County, distribute Narcan community-wide, offer Narcan training to any community member who wishes to seek the training. We've launched our Perinatal Wellness Task Force. We host four AmeriCorps vistas in Lake County. We offer people power change and community advocacy training. We host annual innovation summits. We facilitated our county's Community Health Needs Assessment. We've opened Hope Center, a transitional housing facility, transitional housing hub. We offer data gathering, our Hope, through our website, we offer Data Gathering Hub where it offers data sources from over 311 sites, streamlined and easy to capture and download to you through our website. We have four AmeriCorps vistas in Lake County who are, come to our community from all over the nation, where they have come to Lake County to focus on substance misuse and they work with various agencies to support them. Currently, some to help the county health department with COVID response. Some currently are working to help, to support our county health department with data management as well. They're amazing and they come here for truly altruistic purposes to really leave Lake County in a better place. And so we couldn't be more grateful for the team that we have with us. Advance to the next slide here.
And I guess it's my turn. So here you see a list of esteemed organizations who are an active and integral part of Hope Rising. You know, when I joined Behavioral Health Services four years ago, Hope Rising was really still in its infancy. I was, and still am, excited to be a part of what has become a dynamic and robust coalition. Before the formation of Hope Rising, I can't tell you how many meetings I had gone to with well-intended partners at the table, but it seemed that all we did was just admire Lake County's issues and problems. Hope Rising is changing that mindset and has decision-makers at the table to advocate and propel innovative and creative ways to address, improve, and develop programs to better serve our community. Next slide, please. Sorry, I don't know how to drive this thing. So as I, as I mentioned in the previous slide, partnership is truly at the core of Hope Rising. It, it really allows us to operate out of our silos and work together to maximize funding to offer critical programs and services without duplication. And although the organizations that formed Hope Rising and that are made up of Hope Rising have worked together in the past, the collaborative and cooperative spirit created and fostered by Hope Rising's mission and vision has been invaluable. It's, I mean, it's awesome to be able to pick up the phone or send an email message to a Hope Rising partner and get immediate feedback and support with whatever opportunity is at hand. So with, with the work of Hope Rising, we are able to blend and braid resources to get the biggest bang for the buck, along with offering quality services to our community. Thank you.
I think at the end of the day, you can say that all of the various projects of Hope Rising have to do with increasing community wellness. Social determinants of health are the non-medical factors in healthcare and wellness that some studies say account for up to 80% of health outcomes. These include things like transportation to be able to pick up medication or food insecurity that exacerbates chronic illness like diabetes, so providing healthy nutrition. Or, as this meeting has already talked about, a lack of adequate housing that allows for someone to have a shelter, a place where they can sleep through the night. I have children, I don't know about you, but it's been my experience that when they don't get a good night's sleep, they are not healthy the next day and more inclined to illness. At Hope Center, we are looking at all of these social determinants of health and connecting the participants that are there to these services. Go ahead to the next slide, if you would, Allison. But one of the things that we have learned is that it is not enough to connect people to services. We have to be able to connect them to services in a way that they are ready to participate in them. And we don't always come with that knowledge. An example is one of our very first clients. It took us three months to convince him that he needed to get his California ID because you can't rent an apartment without ID, you can't pick up your prescriptions without an ID. And we thought he was just being obstreperous, you know, like he didn't want to do it. We provided transportation to get him to the DMV. We provided him a document from the government so that it would be free. We offered to help him fill out the paperwork. And three months into the intervention with this particular gentleman, what we learned, when he proudly showed his ID for the first time, he said, "Look, I'm a real person." What we learned was that for him, the idea of having ID that identified him as a real person while he was living in beast mode on the street was more than he could bear. To not have ID while he was on the street allowed him to be okay with that experience of being in beast mode. So once he was stabilized in transitional housing, then he became willing to work on those things that lead to sustainability and being a person that understood himself to be worthy of dignity and respect. So pulling all of these things together at Hope Center, these are kind of where we're at now. I think that's the next slide. Is that right? Can we go to the? Okay, so, taking all of these lessons and bringing them together for what we've learned at Hope Center, let me just give you a brief snapshot of what we've accomplished so far. We have enrolled 21 people at Hope Center. Of those 21 people, 16 are men and five are women. The average age is 47 years old, with the oldest of our participants being 72 and the youngest being 19. Two of them are veterans. The longest person, the longest person in Lake County has lived in Lake County for 43 years. But the average time and length of stay in Lake County, that they've called Lake County home, is 18.32 years. Of those clients that consider Lake County to be home, which is the vast majority, eight of them consider Clear Lake to be home. Two are from Kelseyville, two from Lakeport, one each in Lower Lake, Spring Valley, Middletown. Two are from Ukiah, and one was from out of state. The one who came to us from out of state has already left Hope Center and been enrolled in a residential rehab program. So he's no longer with us, and yet he's one of the people that we've been able to identify as successfully navigating to the next step of that social determinant of health and what they need to become sustainably housed. We've enrolled four people in local college programs. We have helped connect people to medical services, primary healthcare. We've gotten people doctors' appointments, behavioral health appointments. We have in fact been able to help people replace IDs. We've helped enroll them in CalFresh. But I think one of the ways that we begin to understand the impact of this work is not through statistics, as I'm sharing now, but a story. So I'd like to tell one story about one client. This man has had schizophrenia since birth. He, in his entire life, he's now in his 50s, he has had literally one month in his entire life without schizophrenic hallucinations. That one month was given to him in the form of a new medication that he had never had access to before. Because of his homeless status, he was not able to get that medication refilled. And so he went back after that one month of a lifetime of hallucinations, was forced back into it. So when he met with his case manager at Hope Center and we were talking about what are the things that you need to get to a healthy place, he said, "I need this medication." And we were able to get it to him within 48 hours by working with our partners through Hope Rising. The difference that we will see in the lives of the individuals that we're helping will ultimately impact our entire community as we begin to enroll new people and see those who are already enrolled moving into their housing. We have a housing navigator who is dedicated solely to helping people identify their barriers to housing. And she has started a housing plan with 15 out of the 21 people that have been enrolled in Hope Center. Some of them are in different places in their housing navigation. For example, we have some that have the money and they're ready to rent a place. It's a process of filling out applications and finding a place to live, although that is more challenging than it sounds because we do not have adequate numbers of housing available. Some of them are in a place of identifying what sustainable housing will look like for them. They know they need a higher level of community and care than getting their own place to live. So it's identifying potential roommates and locations where they have access to those services. For some of them, it's that they know they will not be able to drive, so they have to be near public transportation. But for me, to say that 15 of the 21 have already started working on their housing plans is really a miracle in Clear Lake. Next slide. Is this me? Sorry.
Yes, you're, you're the expert in this, but I'll,
Okay.
Get the planks if you need to.
My apologies. I couldn't remember if this slide was mine. So at the end of the day, I consider myself, Allison mentioned some of my titles. I've been pastor, I've done disaster recovery work in Lake County, I'm a manager of community integration for Adventist Health. But all of these things, as I said at the beginning, have to do with the health of our community. And housing and homelessness has to do with the health of our community. And the work that we are doing is not only about people who are street homeless, but people who are at risk of homelessness. And the work that we are doing is not adding an increased burden on our community resources, but in fact, reducing the burden on our community partners as we are able to walk people through this housing crisis. We know that when people are experiencing homelessness, they are more likely to utilize services in inappropriate ways. What I mean by that is using the emergency department instead of primary care or being arrested or breaking trespassing laws because they have no place of safe respite. It's estimated that the community cost for somebody to remain homeless in a community is roughly $35,000, a little more than that. Of course, when you have someone who has a chronic health condition, as many of our people do, in fact, a majority of our clients have serious mental health or behavioral health diagnoses that range anywhere from anxiety to schizophrenia, as I mentioned. But it isn't just that. It's diabetes, it's heart disease, and it's jail time. And it is calling law enforcement when they're on the street and people are concerned. As we are able to partner and bring them to some sort of sustainability, it becomes more possible for them to enter into civic society. They are able to navigate rent when they are able to find a place. At Project Restoration, one of our partner projects, we found a person that was able to come into Project Restoration from street homelessness, and within one year, she was able to buy her first home. We have all this breadth of experience in our community. And we know that by working together as a partner, we're able to address not only homelessness, but housing and the core issues that are impacting Lake County.
So part of some of the other work that we do with Hope Rising is conveying to our community why we have, why the priorities that we're working on are important and hopefully gain the support of our community members and community leaders. One of our priority areas is focusing on prenatal substance misuse. Here you can see one of our fact sheets. We have a series of fact sheets. One is on homelessness and housing. One is on prenatal substance abuse, misuse. One is on SafeRx, and I have a series of them. Actually, I've had them sent to you all to review. And they're, they're in two parts. It's one, to gain awareness of, of the need in Lake County and garner support for, for why we should be focusing on these initiatives collectively, leadership, county leadership-wide, as well as community-wide. Here is our prenatal substance abuse rate. As you can see, in Lake County, they're five times the state average. The lasting implications of drug exposure to babies in utero. And ways we pay for that, here on slide two. So why it should be, if it's not, if you're not entirely altruistic and if you are not concerned about a baby being exposed to drugs in utero, maybe the financial cost to it will speak more, more to you, and it's increasingly high. So we're paying in two ways, folks. So really, if you would like to learn more about the work that we are doing, please feel free to visit us. This is our website, www.hoperisinglc.org. You can gather information on here, gain access to resources. There's an easy way to volunteer with us or contact us. The purpose of our desire to meet with you all today is really just to establish a relationship with you all. We have no ask for you. We really just wanted to share with you the work that we're doing and, and have an opportunity to present to you. So thank you for your time. We greatly appreciate the work that you're doing. And I will leave you with this final note. "There's no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about," from Margaret Weely. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the presentation. Supervisor Scott, did you have anything to add to that presentation?
I don't. The partners did an amazing job. It's incredible. I've heard Pastor Shannon tell that story about beast mode, and she actually has all kinds of other stories. But every time I hear them, it brings tears to my eyes. So it's just, it's incredible. I'm very fortunate to work with this group and just, just wait. They have some incredible things coming up, and they are going to change the tide here in Lake County, and it's going to affect all of us. And I'm just, I'm very thankful for you all.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from board members? Go for it. Supervisor Crandall?
Yes, thank you for this presentation. This is very helpful. I know that in listening to the report, I was really glad to hear about all the services provided and whatnot. I know, you know, we have a really struggle with, a really big struggle with people that are homeless and out on the streets in Lucerne. If you drive to Lucerne, you see it, right? Right on, right on the highway. They live right by the, right in front of a home that's boarded up and, and right in front of a bus stop. And then we had issues with people at Middle Creek living underneath the bridge, things like that. So now I know that there's been folks working with them, and I'm not sure if they referred them to, to, or work with your, with your group, but I know that this is, this is some, this is a resource that we can tap into to try to get people some help. I know some of, I really enjoyed hearing this story about the gentleman getting his ID. For some of these folks, it's very, it's a, it's a struggle. They, they don't even intend to. They don't even intend to try to ever work on. They just feel like they never can have it. So with the name Hope Rising, I think it's true because some of these folks can never see themselves even thriving or anything of that matter. So I'll be in touch because there's just too many in my district. Just hearing also that you do the Narcan training, very important. Just last week, there was a situation where some people had taken some illegal substances that were spiked with fentanyl and got really sick. Some people passed and the only thing that saved the others was Narcan. And so that training is very imperative. I know some of the areas where this took place on rancherias, they're doing this training. But I know it needs to happen in the community as well. So definitely we'll be reaching out and getting some well-needed services to the public, especially in District 3. So thank you.
Supervisor Crandall, any other comments or questions from the board? Supervisor Price.
I just want to commend you on your work and your dedication and all the partners. And I, you know, learning about Hope Rising over the past few years, the work is impressive and inspiring. And I really look forward to collaborating with you and making Lake County stronger and bringing us to a place where all of our people can thrive.
Any other comments or questions?
My comment would echo the same. We know that you're doing great work in our community. It's just great to see everything that's done with everyone on the board. So, you know, we committed to our long-term plan here in Lake County to make the lives of our people better and our community members and their households. And this is just one more step and you guys do great work in Lake County. So thank you very much.
I'm wondering, Ms. Pennella, I really want to emphasize as a point that you made on your presentation. Can you share your presentation one more time? There's a specific page that speaks to so much of what I believe in and so much of what we can do here at the board. I think it was page two or three. I forget which one it was. It was the, I think it was the first one that Pastor Shannon was speaking on, the percentages of the health.
Social determinants of health.
Yes, that one hits a chord for me. It's a little too close to home. I know you're working on getting that on.
Yes, one second.
And basically, just to paraphrase, and I'll wait for it to pop up. It says that 50% of our determinants of health is based on our physical environment. And then the biggest part, the 40%, and the ones that I see the most is our income and our education. And the two have so much to do with one another. And education does not necessarily mean you have to have a bachelor's degree. It just means maybe you went to linesman's school and now you're working for PG&E. Maybe you went to some sort of trade school to become a plumber or to become an electrician. But it just means further education than just high school. Every, every study shows that even just an AA degree, which could be your electrician's degree that you received, even if it's just a, what's the word, a certificate program that you went through, it shows how high and the elevation of salaries that you can get in comparison to what you can access if all you have is a high school education. And in this county, our numbers don't look good for that. We have a lot of truancy, we have a lot of dropouts. And when you look at the status of the overall state of California, and again, I'm going to speak on bachelors, but I'm not saying bachelors is the only way to solve this problem. But that's the data that I have. 31% of the population of adults in the state of California have a bachelor's degree. In Lake County, it's about 15%. And in the city of Clear Lake, it's 8%. And to me, that speaks so highly about our status of what we can access in order to fund our needs for our lives to be able to do the basic needs that we need to live a quality of life. And if we focus on those things, and I'm looking at us as a board, we have the potential to have impact on how our decisions work towards increasing the level of income in our community and the accessibility of education. I know there's been work done in the past. We've tried with Merrimount, we're trying with Paradigm College, but we haven't seen that change, that huge boost to be able to really see that. And I think if we focus on those things and that physical environment, fixing our parks, fixing our streets, fixing our communities, we could change so much where now people are taking that change on their own because we can't change necessarily their behaviors versus changing the environment and the status that they're in. And I really believe in that. I believed it when I worked for the college to try to recruit people to come and get certificated for some of these job opportunities or to follow their dreams with an AA or a bachelor's. But I really believe that that is the catalyst to change for our communities is if we look at that 50%. The rest is a little bit more on the human themselves to be able to take on the change of behavior. But I think that change of behavior can come when you create a more comfortable environment for us to live in. So I just wanted to put that back up because I really think that is such an important part of what we need to focus on for change in the county as a whole. And I know we're doing everything we can. Always good to discuss it and see it. And I appreciate the work that Hope Rising is doing. In fact, the last year, the change that has happened to help those experiencing homelessness is beyond what's been done in the last 20 years of Lake County, if not even more. What's happening over at the old juvenile hall, the opening of Hope Center, already in the past five years, I think it's within five years, Project Restoration that's happening over in Lower Lake. All of those things combined are huge. And I think that we will see their impacts in the coming years to come. So I appreciate all the hard work. Keep it up and let us know if there's anything that you need.
Supervisor Scotty, if I may add to this social determinants of health slides, since you brought it up, this piece on income and education, it hasn't launched yet, but we are launching a Smart Start Bright Future initiative in the Clear Lake, Lower Lake, Clear Lake Oaks area that really addresses, a third of Lake County's youth reside in the Clear Lake area. Half of the youth in the Clear Lake area live below the federal poverty line, which is making less, the household makes less than $24,000 a year annual household income. The kids in Clear Lake, for those of you who may not know, if you start out a freshman in high school, the likelihood of you graduating high school at Lower Lake High School is 68%. 32% of the kids at Lower Lake High School are not going to graduate high school successfully. What does that say about our youth? What does that say about our ownership to our youth? I don't know about you, but those are my kids too. And so we intend to do something about that. And I would love an opportunity to possibly come back and talk to you about that or, you know, share with you some information about the launch of this initiative. But it deserves a little bit more time. It's got some prongs.
It's still baking. Patient, thank you so much. Is there any other questions from the board before we open it up for the public? And if we can go ahead and close that share screen, please. And Jake, let's go ahead and open up this Zoom room, please, and see if there's any comments from the public on this presentation from Hope Rising.
All right, I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Hearing none, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. This is just a report, no action needed.
I think we lost Supervisor Shabatia's pros in there.
Maybe it's just me.
Yeah, we lost you for a minute Supervisor, Mr. Chair.
There you are. I lost you as well. Okay, I'm back. Any other final comments before we go ahead and close this item from the board? All right, thank you so much for the presentation. Appreciate the work you're doing in our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to item 6.4, 10 a.m. Consideration of Update on COVID-19. And I haven't seen Dr. Pace yet. And maybe I missed him.
I do believe he's here. Mr. Chair, he may need to turn on audio and video.
There he is. I've sent him a couple of little alerts here, so see if he's around.
Mr. Chair, if he's not, oh, okay. It looks like Sarah is here. If Dr. Pace doesn't go live here in just a second, you might take up 7.3. I believe Ayesha Miller is here to present that. While we
Let's go ahead and move on to that and give him some time to get over here. Item 7.3 consideration.
I did see Ayesha.
You know what, Dr. Pace.
Good morning.
And Ayesha, I'm sorry, we just said we were going to move to 7.3. I want to make sure to get Dr. Pace's time so we can get back to what he needs to get done. Let's go ahead and move on with our update. 6.4, item 10 a.m., update on COVID-19. And Ayesha, we'll get to you next.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, sorry about that. Good morning, everybody. Good morning Supervisors, thank you for this chance to speak today. So basically, we're going to give an update today. The main things I want to talk about is just sort of the surge that's happening, the huge rise in cases and the hospital situation, the change in testing site, and then spend quite a bit of time on vaccines. But first, maybe Sarah can share the data of where we are at locally and kind of statewide.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I have just a handful of slides this morning to give you an overview of what's happening in the state since we met last week regionally and in Lake County. On the left, you can see the total number of tests reported statewide. Here's the 14-day average. In that dark blue line, you can see that testing has decreased over the last couple of weeks. And but unfortunately, we are seeing our test, our 14-day testing positivity can, it stabilized for a little bit, but it has started to increase since about January 6. So we believe this is really the result of sort of the cumulative holidays that we've had in the last couple of weeks. So this is up 1.2% from 14 days ago to nearly 14%. We had this little plateau here for a few days, but again, starting around January 6, started to see an increase in cases again. We had several days of 50,000 new COVID cases reported at the state level yesterday, an additional 40,000 reported. And I just, you know, I think we become numb to these numbers sometimes. If you'll look at that, there was only a handful of days during this whole pandemic that the state reported more than 40,000 cases. So this is why we continue to experience the surge and we will continue to experience the surge over the next month and likely longer. We had about 23,000 COVID hospitalized patients in California reported yesterday and nearly 5,000 of those were in the ICU. California will have nearly, will cross 30,000 COVID deaths by the end of this week. And here you can see that very steep increase, which is reacting to that increase in cases, hospitalizations, and ICUs. Unfortunately, have sort of not gotten better. We're seeing, I think last week I reported nearly 200 new cases identified in the last seven days. And now we're seeing about 250 new cases have been identified in the last seven days, putting Lake County over 2,000 COVID cases to date. About 250 are active and we've had two deaths, COVID deaths, in the last seven days. 12 people are currently hospitalized. That's in Lake County and outside of Lake County, bringing the total to almost 130 people hospitalized to date. The week of December 27th to January 2nd is here in the purple with 212 cases. This week makes up our tier assignment today. I'll share those data on the next slide. But what I want to note so we can plan and prepare for the future is that this week that we just finished, January 3rd through Sunday, we're already seeing nearly 200 cases reported. We will continue to receive new cases and so likely this week will exceed this week here in purple. So we will continue to have to respond to over 200 cases a week locally and regionally, which is why understanding our regional capacity is really important. But first, just to note that the state will announce the new tier assignment today. We will remain well in the purple tier. A daily case rate of 46 per 100,000 for that week. That's up from about 40 last week. Our testing positivity is about 14% for this time period. It was about 12.2% last week. And like I said, in that gray bar I showed, we expect next week's case rate to be similar or higher. For those reasons, our healthcare capacity continues to be critically important. Locally, the ICUs continue to operate at capacity or near capacity. I'm sure Dr. Pace will share some of the challenges over the last week. Northern California, the region that we're in for the state's stay-at-home order has fluctuated between 25 to 35% remaining ICU capacity over the last week. I saw some early data this morning that puts that below between 15 and 20%. Those data are still being validated. But I say that just to remind everyone that we only have about 120, 130 ICU beds in the region. So all it takes is really an increase, a handful of people in a couple of different parts of the region to put us close to that 15% threshold that would put us in the stay-at-home order. The Bay Area, Greater Sacramento, San Joaquin, and Southern California remain under the stay-at-home order due to minimal ICU capacity. The number of ICU patients and surge beds continues to increase in those four regions. So just quickly, wanted to talk about what we know about the cases in the last 10 days or so. So I looked at cases that had been opened by public health between January 1st to the 11th. So what that means is that public health has been notified with a positive lab result and they opened the case on that day. So in the last 10 days or so, I excluded, there was a few people, few cases in congregate living settings and I excluded them. I wanted to see where did recent cases live. So we have about 26% of cases during this time period lived in Clear Lake, 23% in Kelseyville, 21% in Lakeport, 7% in Hidden Valley Lake, and 6% in Lucerne. I also wanted to look at age and what we continue to see, even actually slightly to a greater degree, is that young people, particularly people 20 to 34, are disproportionately likely to be infected and be a known COVID case. So 34% of the cases during this time period, which was about 400 people, were 20 to 34 years old. And that's significantly higher than their distribution at the county level under 15%. And you can see 35 to 44-year-olds were also significantly more likely to be COVID-positive or be a known COVID case. So 40, or, excuse me, 50% of cases were 20 to 44 years old. So I think this is really important information for targeted messaging and testing and isolation and quarantine support. Fortunately, we were doing fairly well, at least in those last 10 days, of protecting people who are older. This is really promising to see. And kids under 14, again, I think we've done a decent job of, you know, protecting our young and our older populations. Wanted to look at the racial and ethnic distribution of cases compared to county residents. So white, non-Hispanic residents make up nearly 70% of residents in Lake County and they represented 46% of cases in the 10, last 10 days. Latino or Hispanics also represented about 45% of cases during that time period, but only make up about 22% of the county population. And we saw among Black or African-American, multiracial, and Native American residents, the cases were about equal to their distribution. um, the cases were about equal to their, um, distribution countywide. And that's, that's all I have. Um, so I think the key takeaway is here is, is we continue to see weeks with, you know, a hundred and fifty to over two hundred cases. That's gonna increasingly strain the local system that's already nearly at capacity and then the surrounding region, which, um, continues to be impacted utilizing increasing numbers of surge beds. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Sarah. Um, yeah, so, you know, as you can see, we're in, the trend continues to worsen. We're seeing, uh, increased rate of cases, increased hospitalizations. We're starting to see a few more folks, uh, passing away unfortunately from COVID. And, uh, there's a little bit of, uh, hints statewide that things may be starting to flatten a little bit, but, uh, we'll have to see, you know, those are, we can always get hopeful and then they get worse in a couple of days. But we're, we're clearly in the surge of Christmas and New Years and we don't know how long it's gonna last. The projections I've seen kind of for the, the state and the region are that it'll be, uh, probably at least a couple more weeks of increasing cases and, uh, probably a hospital peak around, or in early February. Um, and the hospitals are pretty full now and they're, they're starting to have to really expand to take on, um, sort of the surge care. Uh, the, like Sarah was saying, the data we're seeing is, is that, um, it looks like our, in our region, the Rancho region, the number of ICU beds looks like it's dropped a fair amount to about, I don't know, I think it's gonna be seventeen, eighteen percent, something like that. And, uh, that's concerning because this is the first time we've been down this low and if we drop below fifteen percent, then we have to go to the stay-at-home order. And so there's a whole new level of restriction that will go into the whole region. All the rest of the state is in that, uh, regional stay-at-home order now. But we very likely, we could be heading that way. We'll see what the next few days show, but it's, uh, very possible that that's where things are going. And so that would, uh, require us to, we get twenty-four hours then to stop, um, outdoor dining. Uh, churches can, basically, all outdoor gatherings except for churches and protests are no longer permitted. You, uh, you, um, the, uh, retail stores can only have twenty percent capacity in it. They, they, they're not doing the essential, non-essential stores anymore, but, um, the, uh, but basically the idea is twenty percent capacity. Um, schools can remain the same going forward as they are. Outdoor dining is closed. Churches should only be having outdoor, um, worship services, but people can do outdoor activities and exercise as long as they're careful and they do the social distancing and masking. So it's, it kind of puts us back more towards how we were back in May. And here we are, this is, we're at the, kind of the worst of things now. We're at the peak. It's, it's gonna go on a little while longer, but, uh, I think we're probably gonna see in the coming weeks that things are gonna get worse for a little while and then they'll start getting better. But we'll still have the, the, kind of the aftermath of the hospitalizations and probable increase in deaths over that time. Um, we'll see about the regional stay-at-home order, but I encourage people to look it up and see what, see how that's gonna impact them. For example, the restaurants probably wanna be paying close attention because you only get twenty-four hour warning before you have to stop outdoor dining and go only to, uh, to, uh, carry out and to go. So I wanted to give everybody an update on some of the, the responses here that are happening. One is the testing. This is pretty quick. We are, we've switched over to the OptumServe site. They started last Friday and it seems to be going really well. We've gotten really good feedback. It's, it's been a very nice transition. They, uh, so they're open now, seven in the morning till seven at night, Monday through Saturday, three days a week in, uh, Lakeport and three days a week in Lower Lake. Uh, there's also testing available at Rite Aid as a drive-through. So I encourage people to use that as much as you need to. Uh, it's, uh, really a great resource and hopefully this is going to continue through the surge now, uh, through the, the pandemic. So the surge is, uh, as I was sort of talking about, it's, uh, concerning. And locally, the hospitals are generally full. We're trying to send people out pretty regularly. Uh, the hospitals that usually accept are starting to fill up and having less availability. So there are days when the hospitals are really struggling to find beds and to find transportation. The hospitals are working hard, the EMS folks are working hard to keep everybody moving. But it's, um, it's definitely, uh, uh, kind of a, we're, I, I sort of feel like we're a little bit on the tipping point here and we can keep going day by day and maybe one day is gonna be bad. And if we're able to get things taken care of, then the next day is a little bit better. But at some point, it could go down a path where it's a little more, um, uh, congested and harder to get people out, like what we're seeing down in LA. Hopefully, because of our, uh, rural nature and because of, you know, we're not as densely populated and people are trying to take care as best they can, we're, we might be able to really escape the worst of it. But the next couple of weeks is gonna be very, very telling. And I encourage people to stay home and to do what they can to really avoid contact with folks outside your household as much as possible because this is the moment, the next couple of weeks is where we can turn it around by not keep getting sick or it can continue to perpetuate and get worse and worse. And really, all we have right now, at least in this phase of it, is just to avoid contact with other people that are outside your household. Um, whatever you've been able to do before, it doesn't work the same way because there's so much virus and you can see on Sarah's graphs there, it's, it's all around the lake. And, and we're really not seeing it so much in the congregate living situations where we were seeing it before because I think we've learned and people are gotten a lot better about how to protect the folks in the nursing homes and in the jail and in some of these places. But it's really just out in the community now. And so if you go to a crowded store, if you go to places like that, you're, you're likely to be exposed and you probably just need to avoid doing that for the next couple of weeks. Um, the, uh, yeah, I, I, you know, I think the other part is we do reach out to the regional folks. We're meeting with them regularly. I'm having a meeting with them this afternoon to try and to set up pathways that if there are beds available someplace else and they can't find them through their normal pathways, that we're gonna be able to redirect people that way or to see how to best get other transportation, um, options when our ambulance services are tied up and they can't get them through the normal way. So we're, we're trying to find some alternate pathways, which is, um, just to keep things going because really, we're at the point now where we're just trying to get through the next phase as best we can. Um, so let's talk about the vaccine. This is the, this is the good part. We are, so we're in a situation where we have a low supply of vaccine and a hi- high demand. You know, I'm sort of thinking just kind of in round numbers that we're probably gonna shoot for, we can probably expect that maybe thirty thousand people in the county will wanna get vaccinated at some point during this. The kids aren't getting vaccinated yet and there's an acceptance rate of, you know, depending, but somewhere between fifty and eighty percent. So I don't know, it's around number twenty-five, thirty thousand people. We've been getting about, uh, three to four hundred doses a week through the health department. So at that rate, it'll be the end of twenty-twenty-two before we're able to get that, a number of people fully vaccinated. So, you know, clearly that's not adequate. We are waiting for the, the state ha- gets the supplies from the manufacturers and through the federal government. There seems to be some log jams there that we're suspecting is going to be changed in a couple of weeks after, probably after the inauguration. I don't really know. But it's, uh, they're not giving much information. The state doesn't have vaccine that they're not giving out. It's a matter of it getting to the state and then they distribute it out. It's also coming in through the, um, through the, uh, some of the pharmacies. So CVS and Walgreens both get it and they're in partners with some of the, um, the, uh, um, nursing homes to provide that to the residents. And one of the nursing homes has been completely vaccinated now, the residents, and the other two will be done within the week. The, also, the, both the hospitals are getting it through their hospital change now. Started out that we were providing it because there was a lag time, but now they're getting it and, uh, that seems to be going well. And, um, so, uh, we're in the process of just trying to set these things up, but I think it's really important to understand that more people want it than we have vaccine for. So what the strategy here is, is we're trying to prioritize the people that seem to be most at risk and also are, you know, on some level considered to be, um, uh, most vulnerable to, to getting the virus and also if they get sick, it causes some sort of collapse of the systems. And so the, the state and the CDC and the feds basically came up with this, um, guideline where they have these phase systems and it's kind of complicated. It seems to get sort of confusing, but I wanna talk about it a little bit because people really have this question about where they are in the, in line. When, when are they gonna be able to get their vaccine? Or when are the people that work under them gonna be able to get the vaccine? And, um, we're really not, you know, everybody should get the vaccine. That's the right thing. Everybody should get it and get it as soon as possible that wants it because this is how we're gonna get back to life as normal. The problem is, is we're having this supply chain problem. We don't know when it's gonna shift. We don't, you know, we don't know from week to week how much we're gonna get. We've gotten a total of twenty-eight hundred doses, but that's, a lot of that's including second doses. So we've given about, uh, I think it's eleven hundred doses so far. So we, we still have about six hundred, seven hundred doses, new doses to, um, give out and we're giving them out daily now. The, and then, so just to, to kind of sketch out this phase system. Phase one A is the healthcare workers and the folks in the long-term care facilities and EMS workers and different people like that. So it's the folks that are most likely to be in contact with sick people or most likely to be in contact with the most vulnerable. And IHSS workers are in that phase as well. So because they're the ones that are taking care of the elders and we wanna make sure that they don't get sick and then go from one house to the next to the next and get people sick. So, um, we're gonna be pretty much completing that fa- that phase by the end of this week. So it doesn't mean everybody's gotten it, but we've at least offered it to everybody and given them an opportunity to get it. Some of that's coming through the hospitals, some of it's coming through us. Starting next week, uh, Monday's a holiday. So what I wanted to do is start on Tuesday and open it up to phase one B, the first tier. So this is kind of a big deal because, um, we are basically going to start a, uh, kind of providing vaccine to people. And I'm gonna focus on two groups that are the, kind of from a public health point of view, the ones we wanna focus on, which are the folks that are seventy-five and older and the teachers and school staff and educators because we're, the, the older folks are the ones that are most likely to die if they get sick. And, uh, and the educators, we wanna really get the schools back open as soon as possible. And the, the thinking is, is that that's gonna be a way to really, uh, allow people to be more comfortable being in that situation and to prevent the outbreak. So starting next Tuesday, people in those groups are gonna be eligible to start getting the vaccine. Um, so they're al- also in that tier one B in the first tier. So in phase one B in the first tier are childcare workers, food and ag workers and emergency workers that haven't been already vaccinated. So if you're in one of those groups, I'm just encouraging you to hold off and once we get this first phase with the older folks and the teachers gone and set up, then we'll open it up for the next one. But I think if you watch the news around the country, there's been some places where they open it up too fast and it gets kind of overwhelming and people get, um, people kind of get panicked and frustrated. And so we're trying to control it a little bit so that it's a little more reasonable and, and so that the most vulnerable people can get it first. And that's what we did with this one A and it's gone really well. People have been really cooperative and we've gotten a lot of help from the, uh, fire departments and the, the paramedics and the EMTs in the community. And so, you know, uh, it's really, really appreciated to have all that. And now we're moving to this next phase. This is a much bigger phase, of course. You get everybody that's seventy-five and older and all the teachers and the school staff and everything. That's a lot of folks. So what we're gonna do, we are setting up a, a, a stand-up vaccination clinic starting next Tuesday. It's gonna be running six days a week, Monday through Saturday. It's gonna be three days a week in Lakeport, three days a week in Clear Lake. We've gotten support from both the city governments and, um, folks for all that, so, which is, which is great. It's gonna be a place where you drive, you get out, you go in, you, you're, you're gonna have to have had an appointment made already. So we're, and I'll talk about the appointments in a minute. But so then we'll have a list of the names and we'll wanna see your ID and look at your ID and compare it to your name and then have you come in and get poked. And then you have to sit and wait for fifteen minutes because there's been rare occurrences of these, uh, severe allergic reactions. And so we wanna keep an eye on you and make sure if something happens that we can give you the medicine. Um, so the, uh, the appointments, we're trying to work with the teachers through the, the school district. So we've had some meetings. This is all still very early, so I'm sure things are gonna change. And, and I'm sorry for the confusion, but it's moving really fast and we're trying to plan this as best we can. But we're working with the school districts and so they're gonna be able to start making appointments for the people in their districts starting next week. And so you'll be contacted, if you're a teacher or a school person, you'll be contacted by the folks in your school district and, um, get, you know, get put in line and get on an appointment. The older folks are a little trickier because, you know, the appointments are made online and it's an online, uh, appointment platform. And not everybody in their seventies and eighties can figure that out. I know my mother, there's no way she can figure that out. So, um, we're gonna, we're meeting with the, um, Department of Social Services and we're meeting with the senior centers tomorrow to try to figure out how best to coordinate this. So we're still working out the specifics on how to do that. So I, I'll put out a press release at the end of the week and, um, we'll, we'll be figuring out exactly how best to do that. But the good news is, is folks can also go to their, some of their, some of the medical providers in the community are gonna be able to provide the vaccine. So that's the other piece of this. We're try, really trying to work with the medical providers and both Adventist and Sutter and their clinic systems are gonna be able to provide this starting next week as well. So now everybody can't just show up at the door and each of them are still in the process of figuring out exactly what it's gonna be. So some places are probably gonna have like a stand-up clinic, like a flu clinic, but on a Saturday or something and they'll do a bunch of people at one time. Others are gonna have a, you know, some sort of daily thing. So they're still working it out, but I would encourage people to just hold off and not make a bunch of phone calls right now, but wait until you get contacted or wait until we send out more information later on this week. But the idea is, is starting next week, if you're seventy-five and older, we're gonna start offering the vaccines. We don't have enough for everybody to get it in the first week, so it's gonna take a little while to roll out. Um, some of the other clinics and some of the pharmacies are also gonna be able to do this, but we're still in the process of figuring out exactly what that'll look like. So, um, at this point, it looks like for sure it's gonna be our stand-up clinic and the two hospitals and their clinics. And then there's some other possibilities that are kind of in the works, but it's all still being, being put together. Um, so that's seventy-five plus and then the essential workers that are the teachers. The other essential workers that'll be in the next phase, the next grouping of this will be, um, childcare workers, food and ag workers. And so we're, we're planning on that. I'm assuming that's probably gonna be a couple of weeks down the road. And then after that, which is, they're calling it phase one B tier two, is the sixty-five to seventy-four year olds, other essential workers and people that are in congregate living situations that haven't already been done. So, you know, I think it's just, um, this is really good news. We have a plan in place. I suspect we're going to see, uh, at some point, they're gonna say, okay, on Wednesday, we're gonna send you a couple thousand doses, can you use them? And we're setting up this plan so that we can expand it and contract it based on how much dosing we get. I also think they're probably gonna start sending some state, um, workers because as you can imagine, this is a big workload. There's, we need a lot of people to do this and we don't have that in the health department. And so we are getting clearer about what our needs are. We're, we're talking to the state and they're probably gonna send some people. We're talking to the county and some of the workers that do other things are, they're, they're gonna come over and, and share some of their time with us to help us with this stuff. We're also looking for volunteers, so people are, are interested in volunteering. They can, uh, contact us at the health department and we'll get you hooked up and kind of do the paperwork and get going. And, uh, we're also probably gonna hire some temp people. So, you know, there's a bunch of different pieces going on here to try to get, because we have this little staff that's really doing a lot of things right now. The testing and the, the contact tracing and the case management. And now this huge deal is coming in that's gonna be a daily thing. And I assume for six months or so at least, um, depending on how much vaccine we get. So, but we also have these great community partners that are working with us and helping us with it. And, uh, I think we're gonna get through this and I'm hoping we're gonna be able to put the vaccine out as, you know, with a little bit of lag time, maybe a week or something, but we're gonna get it out as fast as we get it with, uh, as long as we get the help we need and we're, we're ready for it and we're, that's the way we're thinking about this. So, you know, I think that's really the, the main pieces of what I wanted to say today. I think just to kind of, the last little points, the coming weeks are gonna be tough. And if you can stay home and not go out and socialize and not go to the store except for early in the- except for early in the morning and late at night and tell your grandma to not be out there right now because it's not good. There's a lot of virus around and it's it's, this new variant may be a factor. We don't know, we haven't identified it here, but we haven't really checked for it. We're not seeing anything that it seems like it is, but we don't have a good plan around the state to really track this variant. And so and and the response is the same. Stay home, wear your mask, get vaccinated. I think the vaccines are really positive development and we're optimistic that things are gonna start flowing a little more. And we're, this is gonna be what our focus is for the coming months, to get people vaccinated as fast as possible. I really encourage people to um do a little reading because the uh safety profile has been good. It's um, we've had a few um uh kind of allergic reactions, not so much in our county, but in uh in the larger picture. But out of all the shots that are being given, it's pretty rare. And it does seem like there is some tenderness and some flu like symptoms that come after the second dose for some people, but the first dose was pretty benign for most everybody. And then I think, you know, we're also really interested in getting the schools open as soon as we can. The governor and the state has really put a lot of effort into that. And Brock and uh and all the superintendents are really working hard on this to try to get this to where the schools can open safely. But we can get the kids in before, you know, before too long into the springtime. I think that's really the goal all around. So um and I think the businesses, we're really hoping to get out of this phase as soon as we can, although it looks like it may be a little more ominous for the coming weeks. But soon after that, I think we're gonna be able to move into a more open phase where we can start um getting closer and closer to normal life and the businesses can start getting back on track again. So um thank you, thanks for all your support and kind of really encourage people to be careful the coming weeks.
Thank you very much for your report, Dr. Pace. Any questions or comments from the board for Dr. Pace or Sarah?
I do. I have a few questions, Dr. Pace. Um, the first question is given, or Sarah also, the um the rising cases in the younger age groups. Are those age groups um changing in the hospitalizations and the deaths? I know in the past it was the older population that was being hospitalized and we were had and and dying. So is that changing? Is that, are those ages coming down at all?
Do you wanna, do you know, Sarah, or?
Yeah, I and I, my internet cut out a little bit. I can, I heard the first part of your question. So we've, Lake County has always seen that age group, twenty to thirty four and thirty five to forty four, make up uh the largest portion of cases. Um, so um, well, it has increased a little bit over the last ten days. I wouldn't expect it to change dramatically enough um to change our hospitalizations. The last time I looked at our hospitalizations, I didn't notice a change in median age. Um, but I'll look at that again this week as we have had a fair amount of hospitalizations over the the last two weeks. Um, but I haven't seen that yet. Did I answer your question?
And also with the deaths, the ages of the people that have died, are they um older or are any younger people?
Yeah, we've had, most people are over the age of sixty five and we can share the exact statistics um next time. But most are over sixty five, though we have had deaths in young people as well.
Okay. And then um, so Dr. Pace, putting the teachers and the education staff um in the next round of vaccines, how does that change the opening strategies for the schools and applying for waivers?
So um, the school reopening plan has changed quite a bit. So it's uh and it's totally in flux right now. They're really, the state uh has really decided that reopening the schools is a is a top priority for this spring. So the waiver system is now kind of gone by the wayside. And there's a whole plan for opening and having safety plans in place. And um uh so basically, the the bottom line is that what's gonna be happening is the schools that were open before can reopen, you know, once this surge is over or once they feel like they're ready. We're in conversation, I'm in conversation with the school superintendents weekly and it's very cooperative and collaborative. Um, the ones that have not been open yet will be able to open once our case rate drops below a certain level. Um, they need to have safety plans in place and those kind of things, but they've all been working on those. And so that's not really the issue. But it's uh and they haven't quite settled on the number yet. But it looks like what it's gonna be is twenty five per a hundred thousand cases. And we're at something like thirty nine right now. So we're, you know, quite a bit higher than that. But once we drop down below that, the schools that have a plan written, submit that to me. I have five days to look at it and if I don't agree with it, I can stop it. But if I don't do anything, they're able to open. And, you know, like I say, we've been in communication, so I doubt there's gonna be any problems. So one, once the school submits all this, then um, and we drop below whatever. They're saying, they were saying twenty eight and I think they're gonna go down to twenty five because there's been some new research. But so if they go under twenty, once we as a county go under twenty five cases per a hundred thousand, then those schools that have not been open yet will be able to open. The the vaccine part is uh not really part of this uh the requirements for the state, but it's been, you know, a lot of the teachers and parents were wanting this to happen before they felt comfortable going back. So that's partly why we're, we're really trying to prioritize this so that we can get the kids back to school because of the educational losses and the social developmental losses that happened just by not being in school.
So um, thank you for that. And um, we made the decision last week to temporarily close the board chambers because um there's been a significant, significant amount of cases in the courthouse and to lessen the impact of the people that work there and the staff to keep the offices open, but also to protect the community that might come in there and be exposed. So I was wondering if there was a report out for the um amount of cases that have been uh reported in the courthouse?
Supervisor Price, I think I can respond to that. Actually, the numbers I have um pertain to county employees in all facilities. Would that uh be responsive to your question?
Sure, that would, that'd be great.
So immediately before um the Christmas holiday, uh i- in the days just preceding that, we had seven cases, uh positive cases involving county employees. And my numbers since then, uh it appears that that number is nine additional positive cases.
Okay, thank you. Um, that's, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Real quick, just a clarification, uh that's sixteen total for the entire duration of us dealing with COVID nineteen?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I believe there would be additional ones prior to uh the Christmas week. I was just giving you the most recent ones.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Supervisor Crandall?
Yeah, so Dr. Pace, just a quick question about, uh, so I I'm glad to hear about the tier systems moving forward with vaccinations. Um, wanted to kind of clarify something or help for for the public to hear because I've been getting a lot of questions about this uh in regards to. So I understand that in one B, it'll be, you said food workers. Is that, is that restaurants? What is that looking like, grocery stores? Um, and and I emphasize that all, not only that, that for that reason, because there's other, there's other facets in the community where where people are doing work, like utility work, uh that that it doesn't stop. It's it's things that people are doing, I know, like in special districts or uh water, water um companies, things like that. And then also mechanics are still doing work regardless of this pandemic. And so just wanted to note, like, is there a place we can go to look at the way the tier system look, the tier system pans out? I know there is, but I just wanted to get it out on the public because I'm getting the question.
Right, uh, thanks for asking that because that's a, that's a really important question and people want to know where they fit in and it feels, sometimes it feels unfair. And uh, you know, the thought process has been to try to, the people that have to be at work and have to be in contact with the public are are um more vulnerable than folks that are able to work from home or are able to be more distant or are able to work outside as part of it as well. Uh, is, uh, so there is a site, it's called uh covid nineteen dot C A dot gov. And then if you slide, put a slash and put vaccines in it, it'll take you to this thing where they list the um, they list the different tiers. And those are fairly general, but you can, you can get a general sense of it. And then there are some more specific that uh, you know, that they're developing as they go. They're kind of developed, so one A is sort of developed now because we're there. One B is just starting to get outlined, but um that's the general idea. And most of what you're talking about, those kind of essential workers are either in the tier two of one B or in one C. And one C, I'm not sure when we're gonna get to that. That's, you know, it really just depends on how much vaccine we get. Uh, it's, once the spigot opens, we're gonna get it out as fast as we can. And then once we get through, kind of what we did in one A is we offered to somebody and let them know that this is how they can get it. And if they decline or they say, well, I want to wait a week and think about it, we move on. And if they decide they want to get it later, then we'll figure out how to incorporate them back in. But at least they've gotten a chance. So it's not like the people downstream are having to wait because other people are, can't make up their mind. We just, we're, we're blowing on by and getting folks that are, that are ready for it as long as they're in the pri- priority list.
Thank you for that. I appreciate um that response. And also just the, just lining out how they're going to conduct the vaccines once it goes further along by stating there's gonna be sites, Clear Lake and Lakeport. Um, that that was a big question and I'm glad to see that that's, that's, that's actually being laid out now. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Any other questions? And just real quick, wanted to say that Supervisor Scott had to uh drop off momentarily. She will be back with us uh hopefully soon. And so Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, I just, you know, wanted to obviously thank Dr. Pace and all his staff, EMS. Everybody has been doing a great job to this point. I ju- I just um really want to reiterate again that uh right now seems to be the real critical point in this battle with the pandemic. Think we've been doing a great job of business owners here locally, individual constituents in Lake County. And it's taken this, taken us this far. But I think really, uh, like, I just want to reiterate how critical these next four to eight weeks are here in Lake County for everyone to do what you can. We understand folks are essential workers, are um businesses, grocery stores. All those have been operating um and just continue to do everything that we can as a community to protect ourselves as we move through this. I I also wanted to um talk a little bit about uh just the supply chain. I I know our health department, Dr. Pace and everybody else, everyone wants to get the vaccine as soon as possible to Lake County. And I know our health department and everybody's doing that. But controlling the uh vaccine rollout is coming down from the federal government to the state government and then down, trickling down through, um, you know, uh, through the state to our public counties here, uh, the local county government. So I I know that it's being pushed. I know folks want the um vaccine to be here tomorrow like we all do. Uh, but it is going to be a process as we move through it. So uh I know that all of our health, uh, Dr. Pace and all his workers are doing everything we can. I know that Chairman Sabatier, uh, you know, also will be doing everything we can with the help of Vice Chair Crandall and the rest of the board to make sure we try and get those processes, numbers increased on vaccine allotments. And those are always conversations happening. Uh, but right now, we are not in control of that. We need to just continue pushing and advocating for all of our constituents here in Lake County and to support the public health department. I just, I wanted to to just get that out there in today's report because we are working diligently. I know it's not happening fast enough uh for anyone, but we are continuing to press and we will continue to do that.
Thank you, Supervisor. And I said definitely a frustration of um, uh, learning to be patient in the processes that we have is very difficult because we all know what we need, we all know what we want. And and access is not always the simple case. I mean, it was a perfect example of talking about the property swap. It's been a long term conversation and here we are finally getting around to something. It's just, it's unfortunate uh that the truth is, there are vaccines sitting in a storage facility and they're just not being moved to the locations that need to be, uh, they need to be moved to in the states. Uh, there, there is a uh supply chain issue and I'm I'm really hopeful that it's getting resolved sooner than later, uh, no matter what the day is or or who is uh the current president at this moment in time. It's just um, it's unfortunate. I do have a couple of questions and and one of them, I think I know the answer, but I need to ask it, is, is the only way to get the vaccine through government means? Uh, is there a way to contact Moderna themselves? Is there a way to contact Pfizer themselves? Uh, is it only through FEMA or through other uh government uh avenues to get access to those uh vaccines?
Yeah, at this point, there's two vaccines that are available. More will be available probably in the spring. And um the the only way is through the state at this point. They, the the feds get it, they give it to the state. The state is distributing it through the pharmacies and through us. Indian Health gets it from the federal government. So there's a, there's a few different pathways, but it's all from the federal government to the state, except for Indian Health, I believe, is a direct contact of the feds.
Right.
But we can't, we can't like go on Craigslist to get it. That's not, that's not available.
That wouldn't be where we should. Uh, my, my next question is, are we only seeing right now Moderna coming in where we don't need to deal with the storage of the Pfizer needing um uh dry ice and refrigerator, uh freezers and things like that? Or are we seeing a more simple logistical situation with it? Or are we still dealing with the Pfizer vaccine as well?
Well, so Pfizer comes in a a package of nine hundred and seventy five. So the initial delivery, like four weeks ago, three and a half weeks ago, was of nine hundred and seventy five of Pfizer. We've used that up. We uh, we had to use it up within thirty days, which we did. Um, the second dose of Pfizer arrived maybe a week ago. And so we're starting to give the second doses now. And um, so we're gonna have that for whatever period of time that takes uh now. But it looks like what the state has done is most of the Pfizer vaccine that's coming in, which is a fair amount, they're diverting to the um pharmacies. CVS and Walgreens are the two ones that are doing this and then those are going into the nursing homes. So at this point, we're not getting any, any additional Pfizer. Is that gonna change in three weeks? We don't know. I mean, literally, it's week by week to, there, there's not any clarity about what to expect a week from now. It's just, we get a, we get a list of how much we're allocated and we order it, we get it in two days. And uh, and so, so at this point, for new vaccine, for first doses, all we're getting is Moderna. That may change, we don't know. And Moderna is much easier to manage. We don't need the, the, the deep freezer. We have uh, uh, you know, the proper storage for that in the county. Mendocino County has been, they did get the super cold freezer and they're willing to share their, theirs with us if that's useful. We haven't really needed it yet, but they've been very willing to share and been very good partners.
Right, and I am glad, uh, it is the easiest of the two to deal with. Uh, but we will definitely take whatever it is that's available to be able to uh get the vaccines out. Um, I think that's all I I have for questions. Any further questions before I open it up for the public? Okay, let's go ahead. Jake, if we could please open up the Zoom room and see if we have any public comment on this item.
All right. I have sent a unmute request out the Zoom room floor. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute, state your first and last name. And did you see Melissa Fulton there?
Um, excuse me, Melissa Fulton. Uh, thank you for a very comprehensive report. Um, it's, it's quite helpful, but again, there is so much information. I, I would like to think I'm not the only one who is um somewhat overwhelmed by the amount of information. Um, but I have a, a serious question. It may not seem serious to some, but looking at the charts and uh all of the information that we've been given this morning, um, without revealing my age, I'm obviously of the age that I am considered one of the um very susceptible or most endangered or however you wish to phrase it. How in the world does someone who is in that age bracket determine that they are in fact um susceptible? susceptible? I mean, uh, it's really a very vague area for me. I feel like I'm in good health. I certainly get around like I'm in good health. Um, work every day full-time or more. So how in the world are those of us in that age bracket supposed to determine that we better step back and, um, isolate? It's a very serious question. And thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fulton. Dr. Pace, do you have any response on that?
Sure, uh, yeah, thank you, Melissa. Um, I do want to acknowledge, I know this is a lot of information and I only gave you half of it. So I mean, it's, uh, things are moving so fast right now. Our poor staff is, heads are just spinning and everybody's running in all sorts of different directions. So, you know, I, that's why it's really appreciative that I get the chance to talk every week and kind of update people because this is a very different talk than it was a week ago. Things have moved a lot in a week's time. And, uh, so we're just, you know, it'll, I'll put out a press release in a couple of days. It'll have some of this again, so it's written down and, uh, but I, I definitely understand that it's pretty overwhelming and we really haven't had to think about this before. So, um, the question about susceptibility is a good one. Um, so you know, I think the way I think about this is if you go to the hospital and talk to some of those people, the hospitals are full all over. And if you read the paper about what's happening in LA County, there's a lot of young, healthy people that are now really sick, like, uh, and they're kind of shocked, like, how could this happen to me? I'm in good shape, I exercise, I have a good diet. And, uh, you know, it's the kind of thing, preventive care is always tricky because if you're avoiding getting sick, is it because you're doing something different? Or you weren't going to get sick anyhow? You never know until it's too late and then you're sick and then it's bad. Uh, I think if you look at the numbers, you look at the graphs, they are overwhelming, but they tell a pretty clear story, which is people get sick and die from this. We've had, you know, hundreds of thousands of people nationwide that have died from this since last March. And, uh, um, and some of them are old, some of them are, uh, kind of feeble in a nursing home. A lot of them are. Those are the, those are the people that are the most vulnerable for sure. But a lot of people that are active and engaged anywhere from their twenties on up can get, get it. So my, my, um, suggestion right now is isolate for the next few weeks, get your vaccine and then, you know, you'll, if you're in the right group, I don't know, but you're hinting that you might be. And, uh, go from there. Uh, this is, you know, you've been able to avoid it this long, good for you. And, uh, but it's very, very, um, widespread right now and the, the chances of getting in contact with somebody that are positive are pretty high right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pace. Hey, any other public comment out there in the Zoom room?
Kathy Toy.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Uh, yes, thank you, Dr. Pace, uh, for everything that you provided.
And Kathy, I'm going to ask you just real quick, is there any way either you can get closer to your phone or somehow raise your volume? It's very difficult to, to hear you. I hear your voice, but it's hard to hear the words.
Is this a little better, Bruno?
It's a little bit better, yes.
Okay. Um, something that I didn't hear mentioned, um, and perhaps I just missed it, was I've heard of all the other groups in the tiers, but I really didn't hear any mention of at-risk folks. So I wondered where people that consider themselves in an at-risk group outside of age, where they fall in, in the tier?
You mean in terms of chronic medical conditions?
No, in terms of getting the vaccination.
But I mean, at, what's the risk?
Health risk. Uh, if somebody perhaps has, let's say somebody's, for instance, forty and they have severe asthma.
Okay.
Or they're forty-five and they have severe diabetes. They don't fall in the age tier, the age group for the tier, but they do have chronic health conditions. Where do they fall?
So just to say, what I have here is this covid nineteen dot C A dot gov, uh, and then slash vaccine, that's where I look for this stuff. And what you're describing is a very good question. And, uh, so we're in phase one B, the first tier. Then we'll go to the second tier and in phase one C, um, there are individuals fifty to sixty-four years of age, so just age from fifty to sixty-five. And, uh, and the second step of that is people sixteen to forty-nine who have an underlying health condition or disability, which increases their risk of severe covid nineteen. So basically fifty and above, they're just focusing on, um, on, uh, age and other risks because of work and things like that. Ethnicity is not playing into this in terms of who gets it and who doesn't. And, uh, then if you get into one C, it's the sort of middle-aged folks, fifty to sixty-four, and people younger than that that have chronic medical conditions that put them at risk. So, um, and you know, this may or may not flex a little bit once the vaccine opens up some, but, uh, at this point, that's sort of the way they're, they're framing it and that's the guidelines.
So in phase one B, for instance, which is seventy-five plus, teachers and school staff, et cetera. So if you went in to get the vaccine and you had an underlying condition, but you didn't fit in that category, you would not be given the vaccine, is that correct?
It's not your time yet. But I think the thinking is, is that, um, th- th- these folks are the ones that are most at risk of dying if they get it or that they don't have the ability to be able to distance and, and avoid contact. Whereas somebody who's got a chronic illness, they, and they don't have any of these other issues, probably right now is the time to stay home until we can get down to that tier. I think that's the thought process. I mean, it's not, you know, with any of these things, whether like Bruno mentioned, a car mechanics or whoever, those people, everybody should be vaccinated today if it was up to me. It's just an issue of we don't have enough vaccine. And so who, who do we need to try to focus on getting to first? And I think the thought processes is, uh, trying to, um, the people that can avoid being out in public like that, uh, should do it while we're getting the people vaccinated.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Pace.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other further public comment? And Jake, I take it that the, uh, offer to unmute and speak is still available to those on Zoom?
Uh, yes, and I did follow up with another one as well.
So it appears that we have no more public comment. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Any final comments or questions from the board?
Uh, yeah, just one, one final question, uh, uh, Dr. Pace. I know that, um, our, our, our county work staff, um, I know we have some folks that, uh, do fall into some of the tiers right now. But for our, uh, frontline workers, um, where would those essential workers fall into the category for vaccinations as we move through the, uh, the tiers?
Great. So when you get to one B tier two, that involves individuals sixty-five to seventy-four years of age. So it's an age thing. Or are those at risk of exposure at work in the following sectors? So this is probably where, where a lot of these folks would like. Transportation and logistics, industrial, commercial, residential and sheltering facilities and services, critical manufacturing. So I'm not sure what all those specific, uh, definitions are at this point, but we'll know by the time we get there. But that's where a lot of the folks, like the wastewater treatment folks and all those, I think are going to be either in one B tier two or in one C, which is, so in one C, the, the, the work-related ones are those at risk of exposure at work in the following sector. Water and wastewater, defense, energy, chemical and hazardous materials, communications and IT, the financial services, government operations and community-based essential functions. So those are a lot of the government, uh, things. So that's going to be one C in there. And, you know, again, it depends on how much vaccine we get because we're, we want, I mean, everybody, just because those folks are one C, they should be vaccinated this week, you know? It's, that's the right thing to do. It's just we don't have it. And I think those folks will probably be, you know, a month or two when we're getting to that point. It just depends on how much vaccine we're getting. We're prepared to expand as much as we can to get the vaccine out once we start getting it. It may take a little bit of week or two, like time, you know, to kind of get things going, but we're, we're setting up the structure so that the structure is basically in place. And then if we have two thousand doses a week, we'll get them out to people. And we're working, the community partners are, are excited about doing this as well. And so we're just trying to set all this so that, once the tap opens, we can let it flow.
All right, thank you for that clarification.
All right, thank you supervisor. Any other comments before we go ahead and finish this item? Seeing none, Dr. Pace, thank you for your report and thank you for the work that you're doing. Uh, again, as usual, let us know what your needs are so we can help you, uh, to get what you need.
Very much.
And, uh, let's go ahead and go, uh, since this is related and just do item seven point three real quick and then we'll take a break. Uh, consideration of an agreement between Lake County Health Services and Lake County Office of Education for RFP number LCHS twenty dash zero zero one, Prevention, Detection and Support, a Lake County covid nineteen initiative for Latino-focused outreach for a one-time cost of a hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and authorize the chair to sign. And Dr. Pace, I think, or Aisha.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. For your review today and request for approval is our agreement for covid outreach to, um, for services to the Latino population. And this agreement is the result of our RFP that was issued on December first. Case data reports released identified that the Latino population is experiencing a disproportionately higher rate of covid nineteen infections. In Lake County, Latinos make up about twenty-two percent of the county's population and forty-three percent of the covid nineteen cases. This agreement encompasses outreach and community engagement, public health education and information dissemination, identification and implementation of strategies to increase testing and facilitate vaccination efforts, provide resources and isolation under quarantine support. The overall goal of the RFP is to reduce the daily case rate among this population and focus. The RFP selection committee has selected Lake County Office of Education. LCOE has worked over the last twenty-plus years to establish a strong relationship with the Latino community of Lake County. Their team has specialized experience with outreach and will support improving our response effort, including development of culturally responsive material, services and resources. The selected recipients will receive one hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars over two-year period. That, um, this funding is coming through our ELC CARES funding and to assist in this effort. And the contract will begin this month and end in November of twenty twenty-two. We are excited to be a part of this collaborative effort that will begin to bridge the gap in communication services and support in the building of relationships with the Latino community. And I believe that this effort will bring about some best practices that we will be able to share out. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Any questions or comments from the board on this item? Supervisor Simon?
I just want to say, uh, thank you for bringing this aboard. I know this is, uh, second contract. We approved one last week from Native American communities and, uh, just glad to see that we're moving forward and getting this money out there to help, uh, through this pandemic, especially with each, uh, different culture that's, uh, here located in Lake County. So excellent.
Supervisor Price.
Yes, I agree with Supervisor Simon. Um, but thank you, Aisha, for also bringing up that, um, this is a, a way to develop best practices, uh, for further, um, establishing communication networks within this community and with, hopefully with the tribal community as we agreed to last week. So thank you for this and, um, and I look forward to how this can really, uh, improve our networks going forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions? So I, I have a question. I was, um, looking at the, um, presentation, uh, that was done by our epidemiologist. And I, I don't know if I'm not seeing this correctly or not, but I see, obviously, we've talked about it, that our county resident ratio versus the ratio of cases for Latinos, uh, is, is definitely something of concern. Uh, and then I looked down and I see for Native Americans, it's not the opposite, but it's got a smaller caseload than there is ratio of population. I don't want to stop what we did last week. I think it's great that we're reaching out and trying to decrease the numbers. But what I see, and maybe I'm seeing it incorrectly, is that our African-American community is showing a higher case ratio than there is population ratio. And I have not heard a conversation about outreach to our African-American communities here in Lake County. Uh, is that something that we can add to this contract? Or is that something that's coming up later? I don't want to leave anyone behind, especially when we see that the ratio is greater in cases.
If I may provide a point of clarification to the first part of your question. So these are, what I presented earlier today is only looking at cases from the roughly the first ten days of this year. And which you're correct, we don't see in the first ten days a disparity among Native Americans. However, over the course of the pandemic, about, I think it's about seven or eight percent of cases have been among, um, Native Americans who, who identify as non-Hispanic, whereas that proportion of the population is about three percent in the county. So overall, among African-American residents, to date, has roughly mirrored the county distribution.
Gotcha, okay. And, and which is great to see, and I apologize for missing the date range of what that data represented, which is great to see such a decrease in the Native American population of number of cases. Um, it, it's, it's exactly what we're aiming for with these types of contracts. Um, do we have any further funds in case that we do see a trend of continuing increases in, uh, cases to show a higher ratio of cases for African-Americans versus, uh, our population? Do we have any further funds that we might be able to apply for the same level of outreach as well?
I mean, hi, uh, so this is, um, this was part of the funding stream from the state around the CARES Act. So, and, uh, so there's not anything particularly earmarked. But Sarah, can you say how many total number of cases are identified with African-Americans is, is small?
Yeah, it's, it's relatively small. So I, um, we've identified to date twenty-five cases among black or African-American, non-Hispanic residents. That's about one point three percent of cases. We estimate that they make up about two percent of the county population. So do not see a disparity to date where, and just to reiterate, we see overall seven percent of cases have been among, uh, Native American, non-Hispanics, about three percent of the population. So we'll continue to monitor closely so that we can be responsive.
I appreciate that. I just noticed it on the presentation. Again, didn't catch the date, uh, but still a good part of the conversation. I appreciate that we're looking at all, um, all of the above. Any other, uh, comments, uh, from the board before we open it up for the public? Okay, Jake, let's go ahead and open it up to the public in the Zoom room and see if we have any public comments on this agenda item, please.
All right, I've sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Want to give people a chance to find that mute button just in case. All right, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board supervisors for action or further discussion.
Mr. Chair, I'll go ahead and, I'll move to approve the agreement between the Lake County Health Services and Lake County Office of Education for RFP number LCHS 20-01 Prevention, Detection and Support Initiative for Latino-focused Outreach for a one-time cost of $192,268 and authorize the chair to sign.
All right, I have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, and it looks like Supervisor Pyska beat Supervisor Simon to the punch. If we can please get a roll call.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
See.
Super, is Supervisor Scott here? No.
She has not returned yet.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia?
Hi.
Thank you.
Ms. Miller, motion passes. And let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. Let's make that 11 minutes. Let's come back at 11:45. And we will return for the rest of the items on our agenda. And we will most likely see a break in between as we do have a specific assessment hearing starting at 1:30 PM. So we'll see what we can get done in between, but we'll be back at 11:45. All right, we have 11:45. Checking in with all supervisors.
Here, ready?
Let's see, everybody is back. Awesome. All right, welcome back. Let's go ahead and, Anita, I need some direction from you. Oh, you gave it to me. Okay, is it okay if I reopen a public comment? I did not realize that the public comment that was submitted to us was also requested to be read out loud. And I did not do that. And I want to make sure and do as was requested of us in the public comment that we received. Is that okay for us to reopen public comment? Looking for consensus.
Public input, I believe, Supervisor.
Public input, yes, I'm sorry, not public comment. Item 6.1. Just looking for consensus from the board on that.
Oh, to allow it? Yes. Yes.
Okay, so I will go ahead and open up the comment that we received and just read it through. At the January 5th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, this was received from Angela Carter. At the January 5th, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, Supervisor Pyska stated this is an airborne virus, and the longer people are in the room together, the higher chance it is in the system infecting the building. This statement was supported by comments regarding the old heating and cooling system in the building. If this is true and the board actually believes the COVID-19 virus is circulating and spreading through the old system via the air, then why is the board permitting anyone to be in the building? Why is the board continuing to allow everyone from the security guards and janitors to the judges and court staff on the fourth floor to operate in a building with poor airflow and virus spreading throughout the air? And as Supervisor Pyska claims, infecting the building. These individuals have children, grandparents and health issues, in particular, the public coming to court on the fourth floor for live preliminary hearings, which are occurring currently. As a landlord to the court on the fourth floor, doesn't the county have a responsibility to close down an allegedly unsafe building with airborne virus infecting the building? I make no judgment on the decision to hold the meetings virtually, but I deeply question the seemingly biased and unequal application of it to only one area and only one group of people. Thanks to you all and wishing you a good day, Angela Carter. Okay, and since I reopened public input, I will ask Jake if he can open up the room to also allow any further public input from any public member in the Zoom room?
All right, I have sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you would like to make a comment, please start by stating your first and last name.
Okay, and hearing none, we'll go ahead and close public input and move on to item 7.2. Consideration of letter to CPUC opposing rate increase for Golden State Water District. So this is an item that I placed on the agenda before the board. In my opinion, well, number one, it's in District 2, so it's definitely within the jurisdiction of the board. But to me, the actions taken here are similar actions to what was taken for the Lucerne area with rates that they have through, I believe Cal City is the water provider there. And also the actions that we take today and the overall results of those actions might be a learning point for us and what we can do in the future for the Lucerne area as well. That Golden State is not the only private water company in the Lake County. And it is also not the only high rate that we have for water. And so I provided to you the letter that I've written just to briefly state, I, I am not here to attack Golden State. In fact, I believe they provide a good service. It is just the rates are prohibitive for the people that live in that area of the city of Clear Lake, most, more specifically Clear Lake Park, to be able to afford water. And in my opinion, water is a human necessity, somewhat like air. And for it to be outside of the scope of affordability is something that I find to be very dangerous for our community members. Not only that, but as you drive around in the area, you will never, not never, I shouldn't use absolute language, but you will less likely see landscaped yards that look very well manicured because of the fact that people can't afford to water and landscape their yards. I've, just for full transparency, I am in the District of Golden State Water. And trying to water my lawn, I received a bill of almost $500 for a single month for just water. And my lawn is not a football field. And to me, that is a ridiculous amount. And we should be able to not only enjoy water for the necessities of hygiene and cooking and drinking, but also for the ability to have some beautiful pleasing aesthetics in our own properties. They are looking to increase the rate as of 2022 through 2024. I, I believe, and I'm just going by the top of my head, 29.76%. And with a 22%, or 29.79% with approximately a 22% increase in the first year. This is in addition to, from 2019 to 2021, there was also a 16% increase. So over the course of six years, there's approximately 46% increase in water rates in that specific district. So one of the issues with Golden State, and it's not an issue, but it's an issue as to why these rates keep going up, is that they are a private company. And private companies do not have access to grant funds that government typically would allow nonprofits or city or county special districts to have access to in order to enhance their infrastructure, maintain their infrastructure, and so on. This is, they are not eligible for these. Therefore, the end user gets the burden of any needs that they have for their infrastructure directly onto their rates. At what point does this stop where their need for infrastructure overshadows the ability to even pay for water? I do offer some solutions because I don't think that a letter to the CPUC should only be about complaining about a situation. I am not the greatest fan of the solutions, but I have to try something. And so one of the solutions I offer is figure out a way to get them access to these grants. The reason I'm not truly a fan of it is it's a private company who can access government funding, who then gets to benefit on their, on the other side for their shareholders to maximize their benefits. But to put it only on the ratepayers, it doesn't make sense either. So we got to figure out a middle ground. The CPUC needs to work on these things. It's a very similar situation to what PG&E, the relationship between PG&E and their customers are. It is a private company doing a public utility. And you don't get much of a choice as to which public utility you have when you move into a home. And so I did dig up also, and I attached it to, the agenda item is the 2019 annual report from American Waters Company, which is the parent company of Golden State Water District, who in their annual report boasts of their rate increase approved by the CPUC helping them increase their shares by 41 cents for each share. And, and I struggle, how, how do we talk to our constituents to say, well, this is why? They wanted to increase their shares so that they can make more money off of the company stocks. I, I, I can't feel comfortable with that. And I need the CPUC to understand that their actions don't necessarily benefit the communities that they are applying these rate increases to. I think, to be very blunt and honest, we've been taken advantage of. Nobody's really put up a fight to stop these things in the past. And it's getting to a point where this is, this is going to hit a critical point where people are not going to be able to afford it. Then their waters are going to be turned off. And at this point, that, that becomes a very public health crisis that we would be dealing with. How much is too much is really what I want to end with. So I've written the letter. You've had the letter before you since the agenda has been posted. And I do want to add one thing to the letter. I had a discussion with Golden State yesterday where they are, have offered before in the past to the CPUC. Right now, it's local rates. So every one of their service areas has unique rates, which you can see on the application that I also submitted to you to read over, that every location they have, Rancho Cordova and other places, all have different rates. They have asked in the past to go with regional rates, which would kind of balance it out between other regions that have lower rates and other regions like us that has a higher rate. They did state that most likely that wouldn't mean a decrease in our rates, but it would definitely freeze our rates for a certain amount of time. So I would like to add that as a possible way to resolve this by not approving this increase and by looking at it more on a regional way. And I believe that it should be in paragraph, let's see, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, in the seventh paragraph, where I offer some of those solutions, where another solution could be looking at regional rates for Golden State Water Districts in Northern California, something along those lines. I think this is important. And again, it does relate to other issues throughout the county. Lucerne is definitely one of the most famous cases. And when you look at the, the average cost of water, I'm complaining about the city of Clear Lake and Golden State's relationship, but Lucerne is in the top 10 highest rates in California when it comes to water. And, and again, in the letter, I do highlight our poverty levels and our ability to afford these things. This is very prohibitive to moving Lake County forward. So I think I belabored the points a little more than I needed to. You have the letter before you. I am open for discussion to see how this moves forward. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Pyska?
I do appreciate you bringing this because these are extraordinary rate increases. And looking through the report, I don't see where the justification is specified for the improvements. I don't know if it's lined out somewhere else, if it's just summarized here. But that's usually a requirement is that you have to justify exact improvements that need to be made. I think that having an entity like this have access to funding is problematic when, you know, when they're beholden to their shareholders. So, you know, that, that does need to be worked out because like you mentioned, it isn't just this utility. It's PG&E and it's, it's other private utilities that service municipalities. So I agree with this letter and I appreciate that you wrote it. And I, I think that there does need to be more justification on, on the improvements that need to be made.
And just to respond real quick, I, I agree with you that the justifications are very vague. Basically, we will do work on infrastructure. I have spoken with Golden State Water. They do work on their infrastructure throughout the year. And while they do work, the infrastructure is still inadequate to meet the exact code of what it is today. Granted, CPUC states if we update the code, they're not liable to meet the code today right away. They have been working to meet that. And one of the issues is fire flows. I've seen them over in the area behind Foods, et cetera. They added a whole bunch of fire hydrants back there, but there's still a lot of areas that don't have the adequate fire flows or the number of fire hydrants available, which forces our fire department to have to always take a water tanker with them to every call because they're not 100% sure that they will have access to the water they need in an area that is a high fire threat. It just, we, we need to ask more. However, asking more will only place the burden on the ratepayers as well. So we have to figure out, how do we get this system to meet the requirements that we would like them to meet without saying, now your average bill is going to be $300, $500? It's just, that's not possible. So it's, it's, they are between a rock and a hard place. And I really believe that the CPUC needs to find a way to make it work so that we can continue to have access to quality water, efficient water, and be in a safe area and have it be affordable. So I, I think it's up to them to, to figure that out, offering solutions. Hopefully, they can find some better ones.
Yeah, I, I cut out for just a second there. But yeah, the high standard of having high-pressure flows and hydrants for, to mitigate fire risk, you know, that has to be part of this, too.
Supervisor Crandall, I saw you unmute earlier.
Yes, just wanted to comment. You've been plugging Lucerne, and that really helps me because we, we have been dealing with this problem with Cal Water. It's, it's not necessarily Cal Water. It's just a situation in general. But they have also been working very intimately with people in the town. One of the things they did initially was exactly what you said, is they, they regionized the, the charges and lowered. But then now we're, we're in a situation, I think I want to say in 2019, where they were forced to raise prices here and there. They did things like work with the community and got them applications for LIRA or, you know, low-income type of rates, things like that. And with your help, I got the, I'm in contact with Navid, I think his name is, and just trying to start preparing for anything or getting something prepared in case something comes forward, try to work as much as possible with Cal Water. And so I, yeah, I'm in favor of this letter. I understand, and we, we do need to figure out something because it's not fair that the poorest communities are paying this cost. You know, why can't, yeah, I don't want to get into why can't or whatever, but we really need to figure out a solution, so.
Any other comments?
My comments are, you know, obviously, I think the, the intention of the letter being brought to the board obviously is something that we, at least I support. And it sounds like a majority of the board supports. I do just, you know, want to caution us as a board, you know, this is a private industry. It's a private company, as you said, doing business here in Lake County. And, you know, I just want us to keep that in mind. Each and every one of the rates, including our water and sewer that we operate as a community organization, I think each and every one of us that have those opportunities, when rate increases come, you know, ultimately, no one likes rate increases. They are a necessity ultimately. And, you know, as we look into this, and, you know, most likely it sounds like, you know, and I am in support of sending the letter. I, I will make one comment. I, I, you know, I, I would have preferred the letter, say, in support of our local partner, our city partners, supporting, you know, Clear Lake's opposition to this. That would be one thing I would like to see, so it looks more as a collaboration letter with the city of Clear Lake, with the county, being that we're communicating to each other. But I'm fine with moving forward as is, too. I just wanted to make that comment because each and every opportunity you think we have to work with the city of Lakeport and Clear Lake and get these universal letters out, especially to the CPUC like we did for the PG&E PSPS, I think just increases the power and the authority, you know, coming both from the county and the city. So other than that, thank you for bringing this here. And each and every opportunity we can to protect our lowest-income constituents needs to be important. And as you said, the health and safety of having, you know, good drinking water and water supply is very important. So thank you, Supervisor Sabatia.
Appreciate the comments. I, I have been working hand-in-hand with the city of Clear Lake. And I guess the best excuse I can make is I, I failed to meet the right timeframe to be able to get a letter where we can both sign on and, and make it a collaborative effort. However, they did have a council meeting item in their last meeting to discuss this. And they will be drafting a similar letter. I've submitted my letter to them as well, so they're very. I've submitted my letter to them as well, so they're very well aware of the um comments that will be made by the county. If there's no further comment, uh, open it up to the uh public to make comments. Jake, if we can go ahead and send out an unmute please.
All right, I have sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. Uh, if you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
And I see a Paul T. Schubert, if we can go ahead and start with him.
Yes, hello, thank you. Um, my name is Paul Schubert, I'm the General Manager with Golden State Water Company. Thank you for the opportunity to um address the board. I, I do want to state, I sent a letter this morning um uh late, and I, I apologize for that. Um, I just noticed this was on the agenda yesterday, so it took me a little bit to get a letter together. Um, and I sent to Carol around nine fifteen, ninth of this morning. If you'd like, I could read that letter to you or I could just submit it and you can mute it at your leisure. But I did want to point out a couple of items. Well, A, I, I really, I do appreciate the kind words for Golden State and also the um you're looking at options and I, I appreciate that because I fully agree, we would all love the rates to be lower than what they are. I don't think that's any dispute at all. Uh, I do want to talk about the grants and if we were able to receive grants, that doesn't go to our shareholders, we don't earn on that, that doesn't go to profit in anything whatsoever. All they would do is just offset infrastructure replacement needs that we have in the system. And, and you're absolutely right, that's the driving cost of rates is the infrastructure replacement. In the last five years, we spent about $4 million in Clear Lake. Of that, two and a half, more than two and a half million was on pipelines and fire hydrants. So if you think that that, they have 2,000 customers, we spent $4 million in five years. That is, that is the majority of that um rate cycle there. And we have future improvements, as you said, there's never going to be enough funds to do all the system improvements that water systems need. Um, and that's an ongoing challenge we have statewide, nationwide is our infrastructure. So I really do appreciate your involvement, I appreciate your innovative thinking. Anything you could do to help offset these, I will for it. And I, and I, we will be looking again at the rate consolidation, we'll try that again in 2023, look at that. We have a um in our coastal area, which we have that in our file right now, where we're trying to consolidate some smaller systems. And we're, hopefully the PUC will support that because if they do, that will allow us to do the same thing in 2023, which we're required to file every three years. So I just said, I want to put that out upfront, it's, it's not our choice, we have to file every three years. And at, at that time, if they approve our filing this year, the coast, we do this, uh, we look at doing the same thing in 2023. And I would love to work with you on, on how that's going to look and as that gets closer. So could I leave it up to you to, for the letter, or would you like me to read the letter, what's your preference to that?
Uh, if, if you can send it, number one, absolutely, 100%. If you can maybe uh either summarize the letter or read the important points just for the fact that uh public comment is limited to three minutes. Uh, I wonder if uh, how, how long is your letter?
Uh, it's only about a page.
Okay, I'd say go for it.
Okay, um, and I skipped the introduction part, I go down to that page or the third paragraph. So the, I just want to point out the average bill in Clear Lake right now with the five each, the residential customer is $93.63 a month. That's the average bill. Um, and it's also interesting, as I looked at the rate history, and I know we had that rate increase the last cycle, but we also have these surcharges and sur credits that show up and pop on and off. The customers in 2017 were paying about $92 a month on the average for 2017. And January 1st, our rates increased to $93 for the same, for the same customer, for the same amount of water usage. Um, so I want to point that out. It's also, I think, important, and you brought it up in your letter, which I think is an excellent point, the poverty rate in Clear Lake is very high. But we also have that rate um assistance program, it's called CAR, which is a California, I always mess this up, so let me read it, sorry, California Alternative Rates for Water. And we have 27% of our Clear Lake customers take advantage of that. And that's, they get a $29.10 credit on their bill. So they, they actually get some assistance on that. And that's one of the benefits of actually investor on utility is they, we are able to offer that. Most public water agencies cannot because of Prop 218. Um, so we do have some assistance programs for, and, and we'd love to expand that too. So if you ever talking to any um customer or anybody who doesn't have that, you think they should, it's really simple to apply for, it's a couple of questions and they, and they get it. I also talked about our, I already talked about the um investments, $4 million the last five years, two and a half, uh, more than two and a half million for nearly 9,000 feet of new pipelines and hydrants, and that's beginning the last five years. And then I also talked about their um, looking at the consolidation rates. So that's pretty much the, the gist of the letter.
Appreciate that, and I know that you provided some uh different numbers than what I provide in my letter. Uh, in the letter, I do say of the people that I surveyed, and I'm not a hundred percent sure, maybe you can respond to this. Does your average rate also consider uh homes that are vacant uh possibly for a month at a time or more if they're Airbnb or if they're seasonal homes?
It, I'm sure it does, absolutely, it would take a hundred percent of our customer classes, um residential customers divided their, their usage by the year, and that's going to be the average bill by customer. Because we really, it's very difficult for us to know who's home and who's not, if they're, they're weekends only, you know, us, but that is, you're right. So if you're living there full time, um, and you have a larger house, your usage could be higher than that. If you're a part-time or seasonal home, your usage is less than that.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you for the time.
Any further public comment on this item?
And I did send out a additional unmute request.
Looks like we have no further public comment, let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Uh, and just wanted to remind the board of the uh possibility of the addition of adding uh another potential solution of a regional approach for rates.
Chair Sabatier, would you like me, would you like to pass the gavel and then make the motion, or would you like me to make the motion for you?
You know what, I, I would actually appreciate that, but it looks like Ms. Hutchinson has a comment to make before we go ahead and go, uh, get started on that.
Thanks, it's a question really to make sure I'm understanding where you want that additional sentence added. Um, so we can make sure you're, you understand what the change is and, and staff does too, so we can make it for you. So I believe you said the seventh paragraph. So for mind you, that would be the second paragraph on page two, is that the right paragraph?
Yes.
And you wanted it to say, um, basically you wanted a statement that would e- express openness to looking at uh options such as regional rates for uh Golden State Water District. Did I get that right?
Yes, and, and.
Where would you like to put that?
Reviewing to make sure that that is the correct, you know what, I, I'm thinking that it's probably best on the last paragraph where it says our request.
Okay, okay.
And um.
So we could, so after that first sentence in uh, in that last paragraph, we could then say, um, we are open uh to looking at regional rates for Golden State Water District. Does that work? Have I stated that correctly?
Help relieve the burning fires.
When is that, on April?
I'm sorry, you kind of cut out.
So then what quarter is that? That's the first and second quarter, you circled the wrong one. Cross out three and four, that, this one would be for.
And mute Moke, I think he's uh having a separate conversation. We muted you, no worries.
Oh, I apologize about that.
It happens, it happens. Uh, so yeah, second sentence, uh.
So we're adding a new second sentence, we are open to looking at regional rates for Golden State Water District?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much for uh clarifying that.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion before we move on with action? Okay, seeing none, let me go to uh the actual agenda item. I will pass the gavel on to Supervisor Crandall to be chair.
All right, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion for this item on the agenda, 7.2.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter to CPUC opposing rate increase for Golden State Water District with changes with the letter being submitted to our CPUC rate case judge uh as well as our state representatives.
Is there a second? So I have a motion and a second, uh, Johanna, would you go ahead and do us the honors of a roll call?
Yes, so it would be Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier.
Hi.
Supervisor Scott, is she here?
Has not returned.
Okay, Supervisor Piscia.
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so that makes it four to zero, this item passes uh unanimously. And uh, we'll go ahead and move on to item 7.3 and I will, or actually I will, item 7.5 and I'll pass the gavel back to Supervisor Sabatier.
A demonstration of Zoom webinar option for board supervisors meetings and B consideration of direction to staff to implement Zoom webinar for BOs meetings. Hopefully you heard me because my internet was unstable at the time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I did hear you, I hope everyone did. Uh, so Matthew Rothstein is going to introduce this item. We've worked with Jake to create a simple PowerPoint presentation for you to illustrate the difference between the regular Zoom, which we're using now, and the option for Zoom webinar, so go ahead, Matthew.
Hello, Board, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you. Uh, I wanted to just uh say that we greatly appreciate your board's commitment to continuing to work to refine the quality and the accessibility of our public meetings despite the challenges that have been brought by the COVID-19 pandemic. And in continuation of those efforts today, we have Jake Rinkie, who has prepared a presentation for your consideration regarding Zoom webinar. And in part B of this item, you'll be invited to consider direction of, direction to staff to implement Zoom's webinar product. And that would carry an additional licensing cost as described in Ms. Hutchinson's memo. And so Jake, welcome and thank you.
All right, good afternoon, thank you for having me and giving me the opportunity to present this to uh you, the chair and the board here. Uh, so without um any further ado, I will start a screen share here. And we'll jump into the presentation. All right, so today I will be discussing Zoom webinar with you. Uh, so we'll start off, uh, what is Zoom webinar? Uh, so Zoom webinar is a, um, it's a Zoom, it's a standard Zoom meeting room with role-based user experiences. Uh, we have on two different sides, we have a comprehensive and approachable um split for attendees. And then it also provides a more inclusive and efficient experience for panelists. Um, those will be our two types of, our two, or splits in Zoom webinar, um, attendees and panelists. Uh, Zoom webinar will also provide a simple interface that is easier to use. It will also um provide host necessary tools to keep down disruptions and maintain um integrity with the board of supervisors meeting. The Zoom webinar also provides staff with a couple of new tools that um might be chosen to be implemented or not. Um, I've included them in this presentation, just to kind of present them to you guys, so you guys know what, what is available. Uh, that does include Q and A and polls. So without further, or um, we'll, we'll jump into attendees view here. Um, so the um, we do have a, a new view here for attendees. This is um a, well, I, I got a screen grab, so this is actually what you would see if you join Zoom meeting here as an attendee. Uh, you see here at the bottom, um, we only have options for chat, raise hand and Q and A. It's very basic, it's streamlined, um, all the necessities for interacting with the Zoom meeting for attendees is provided front and center. Um, we will have, you'll have an unmute button on the lower left-hand side of the meeting or of the Zoom window um, once you are given the opportunity or um the ability to unmute. Uh, there is a toggle for that for attendees. Um, Zoom settings is accessible on the top left, um, just as, as, just as it is with a normal Zoom meeting. Just click that little shield there and you can open up Zoom meetings and do any setting adjustments necessary. Um, the center here, you, you'll see um the active panelist view, all, all the cameras of the camera feeds from the active panels will be presented here. You will not see, as, as an attendee, you will not see panelist views um or display pictures. So if a panelist is not sharing their camera and they have a camera shown off, turned off, uh, they will not show up in this, in this scene here. This, you'll just see the host, you always just see the host as a display picture if um there's no active cameras. Uh, you also notice on the um upper left-hand side of this window here uh that there is a panelist and attendee count. Uh, that is, that is the, the way an attendee would know how populated a meeting is. So um, when you are promoted to a panelist, there is a little transition. So um, attendees are promoted to panelists by the host. Um, it's just a couple of clicks. Um, once you're promoted, you will see this screen, your Zoom window will close. Uh, you'll see this rejoining, um, and the new sp, view will open up. And you'll see this, uh, panelist view. Um, as you can see, this is very similar to the standard Zoom view that we're accustomed to right now. Um, we do have a couple of additions here, uh, some, some of them. Uh, so you see we have a raise or lower hand option for panelists. Um, we also have a um raise hand count between panelists and attendees. So you'll be able to see the number of panelists that have their hands raised, the number of attendees that have their hands raised. So you could kind of um, adjust that as you need. Um, we do, and then you'll see the new optional Q and A feature at the bottom here as well for, for panelists or staff. Um, the panelist video, you know, appears in the center just as uh normal Zoom. Um, the panelists do see displayed pictures from other panelists. So uh, they will know everybody that is um, a, a panelist in the Zoom meeting. That, that, that's different from the attendees view. And so next, we're just going to jump into the host real quick and just kind of uh check this out. Um, there is uh some additional things for hosts, but very similar to the panel's Zoom view, there is no transition between being made a host from a panelist, so it's the same window there. Um, we have uh new optional features, there's polls down there. The host is the only person that is able to uh start that polling process. Um, we also have some additional controls here um for layout views for attendees. Uh, this will allow the host to kind of control the um, the way the attendees see the uh, the, the board meeting or the Zoom meeting, sorry. Um, so we can kind of set that to gallery view for everybody or active speaker and kind of toggle it back and forth um to kind of maintain like optimal experience for those attending the meeting. So we're going to touch on the Q and A here real fast. Um, I did run through and kind of explore it a little bit. Um, the attendee would click the Q and A button and they will come up with a screen that you see just like this one, where they could type out their question to be asked. Um, they also have an option here to stand anonymously, we'll touch on that a little bit more too. Um, once that question is submitted, any panelists will see a little, a little notification just like that over their Q and A button that's at the bottom of the screen. Um, and if they click on that, they'll see a menu just like this. Um, it will list the questions that have been asked. Um, and you'd be given with an option to either answer it live or type an answer. If the question is answered live, um, a, a typed answer could always be followed up. There are some settings to kind of control that the way the um questions flow throughout the meeting. Uh, you can set the questions so that um only answered questions are viewed by the public. So we'll get all of the questions sent in, but only ones that are answered will actually be able to be seen by public participants or attendees. Uh, questions can be answered by any panelist, um, Q and A like chat is not logged. Uh, so the Q and A isn't logged, once, just, just like Zoom chat. Um, once the Zoom meeting closes down, any um, any logs of Q and A is white, so that is uh kind of lost. Polls, so um, kind of explore the polls here, not, not too much. Um, this is a, a, the poll submission form that you would see if you were the host and you were setting up a quick poll. Um, you know, chance for a title, uh, ask the question, and you get um a couple of uh spots for answers. You, I mean, you could set up multiple polls, you could have a variety of polls set up for your meeting um beforehand. Uh, the idea with the polls is, is um to do the polls before the meeting starts and kind of have these things established and ready to use. The idea with the polls is to do the polls before the meeting starts and kind of have these things established and ready to use. The host, once they click on the polls button, they'll see menus like this pop up, they select the poll they want to run and they click launch. Once the host launches those polls, the polls will go out to the public or to attendees. They can also go, you could also include panelists in the polls as well. See. So this is the host polls window, poll results can be shared once they've been completed. So you close the poll and then share results and that will share the results with everybody in the Zoom meeting. A single generic poll can be created and relaunched multiple times. So with that one, I kind of like in this one, I had a generic question asked, it was like, are you in favor of the current item being discussed? And then just yes or no answers, so that would be one way to kind of, you know, question support for an item being discussed if that was in interest of staff or panelists. Poll results are saved on the, with the, on the Zoom website, so if you wanted to reference those polls again, they would be available. If a poll is relaunched, if a single poll was reused and rolled over again and again, only the last results of that poll are saved. Alright, so we're just going to touch on some advantages and disadvantages between Zoom webinar real quick. Advantages Zoom webinar, it's very easy to use, it's a lot more straightforward. You don't have to, you won't have that menu navigation that we have now for participants or attendees, I'm sorry, to kind of like raise their hand because right now you kind of have to walk people through a direction to get to that button. Single menu interaction for attendees is fantastic, everything they need is right there at the bottom. That maintains true for people who join via mobile devices if they happen to use an Android or iPhone, sorry. Only panelists can share the video, so you only have staff share videos in these Zoom webinars, you won't have public interruptions with shared video or any video streams. Mute, unmute, share screen and raise hands, all available for staff, that's new, that's neat, I know that's a very requested thing. When currently when we use the co-host status to allow staff to unmute themselves, they actually can't, they can't raise their hand. And I know a lot that's been raised, brought to my attention a couple of times, so. Host control for public participants, there's a lot, lot of, would we be able to control or adjust the view for public participants with this? So we could kind of make sure that people are getting the optimum viewing experience for the Zoom meeting. I did actually walk someone through activating gallery view the other week and she was surprised how much more efficient it was to view Zoom meeting that way and she said that she wished she knew about that ahead of time or before. You know, so we've been doing this for a year now and people still aren't finding all of the different ways they could interact with the Zoom meeting, so. Anything that we could do to improve that, I think is great. Some disadvantages, right off the bat, attendees can't share video. And I know that is a concern, that's kind of shared, but that's just what it is. Attendees cannot see list of panelists, so they are kind of left, it does kind of feel like you're in a kind of in a dark room watching a TV. While it's when you're in the Zoom webinar, you're, you know, you have everything right in front of you, you have the gallery, you see all the people, you see the public participants, you see the staff and all that stuff, but it's just one big giant mess, so it's all there. Now disadvantaged panelists with no video enabled are hidden from attendees, that might not be desired, but it also kind of enables us to it enables us to maintain the current conversation and make sure that if if your video is on, you're involved in that conversation and there's no that there's no like space taken up by someone else's name being in that conversation or kind of wondering if they're ever going to jump in or not, you'll, everyone, the people in front of you will be the ones discussing things for you. The unmute all option doesn't apply to attendees, I did put an asterisk on this, there is a way to make that work, super convoluted and complicated, but if we wanted to do it, it is possible. The unmute all option applies to panelists and panelists will get that prompt once that button is hit. Attendees can see that prompt come up to them too if they are given the ability to talk ahead of time. However, if they are granted that ability to talk ahead of time, they are also able to unmute as they see fit, so it kind of removes the use case for us with that.
And real quick, you can interrupt, that's already the current status for when you send out an unmute is that somebody can hold on to that unmute continuously, so it's not a new thing, it's the same problem that you would have today.
Yeah, very much so. To continue, public attendees can't see other attendees to be offered, they can only be offered a count of panelists or attendees. Once again, kind of a little bit more lonely feeling, maybe a little bit more in the dark as you, once you're, if you're in the Zoom meeting, you don't see your peers, right? So as an attendee, you don't see who else is in there with you. Another disadvantage, probably one of the larger ones, is the participant capacity is limited based on the license. We currently don't have that issue, so and right now as many people as we wanted to come to Zoom can come into Zoom. Eventually there is technical, the possibility of technical difficulties that come up with higher Zoom room counts. But aside from that, we don't have any sort of restrictions. With this, we could, like if we get the cheapest license, the hundred dollars, I shouldn't say cheap, sorry. If we get the hundred dollar license, that would limit us to 100 participants in the Zoom meeting. So I know we've had a couple of days where we had more people in the Zoom room and that count's been up to like 116, 130. That wouldn't fly with only being able to allow 100 people in the Zoom room. Right, next slide, Zoom webinar twice switch, security, security, security. Did I mention security? This is very important, Zoom webinar offers a preventative threat deterrence where standard Zoom only offered reactive threat deterrence. What does that mean? It means that we can root out the possibility of any inappropriate acts before they would happen. With our current setup for Zoom, I can only address an issue once it's already become an issue. I can remove somebody in the room once they become, once they kind of, once they become inappropriate or show inappropriate behavior, but we can't do anything to limit that behavior ahead of time. Zoom webinar also allows us to remove the excessive use of the co-host status. Currently we use co-hosts to give people the power to unmute themselves and, you know, manage to mute status, share the video, share screen, stuff like that, because that is the we had to go that far to disable everybody from being able to do whatever they want. But with that, the co-host also has the power to remove people from the Zoom room, they also have the power to mute people. They have power to do breakout, they, you know, there's a lot of different things that a co-host can do. And removing excessive use of that will cut down on any sort of accidents or weird things that might be happening in Zooming. Because if you're looking at that participants window, that thing shifts and changes as people come and go. So you might think you're doing one thing, go to click it and next thing you know that shifted someone else's name and you just accidentally muted somebody. I mean, it happens. Limited controls for public means less shifting through menus. And making things easier for people to access is always going to be a benefit. Like we have, the attendee window will have everything they need to do to participate with the meeting right there in front of them. They'll be able to raise their hand as whenever they need to. And they can take a chat to reach, we do limit chats, so it only goes to the host, so they'll be able to chat with me and ask any questions that need to be asked, right there, very conveniently. Staff can flag interest to speak with the board without interruption with this, staff being able to raise their hand I think is very beneficial for us too, and I think the board will benefit from that option as well. Zoom webinar offers additional clarity, only staff will be able to share a video, no unintended video shares. You know, we won't have people join Zoom meetings and then turn their video on. And we know that happens, that happens now and I kind of go through this entire process of identifying who the person is, kind of wondering if they're on the next item, if they're, oh, I turned their video on for public comment. You know, there's this whole kind of internal monologue that I run through to kind of address whether I should turn this video off or not. And this would, and so let's just cut that down so that we would already approve people ahead of time to come in as a panelist if they needed to and they would be able to show the video. Lastly, we have the ability for the host to assign the most optimal viewing experience. So that means that the host can set the attendees view to spotlight view or to gallery view as needed. So like if the board is having more dialogue, that's going back to back like we are right, 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 or today with the Zoom meetings. We can do the gallery view and we will have all those talking heads kind of in the same screen for people. Without the clutter of the rest of the participants, right? So it focuses on what we want the focus to be on. Or if we have an individual speaking for a long period of time, like during a COVID update, we could change that to a spotlight view and have them front and center. And I think that is my presentation for Zoom webinar. If you have any questions, feel free to hit me with them, but that's all y'all, thank you.
Alright, thank you very much Jake, appreciate being the man behind the curtain. If there's any comments or questions from the board, yes Supervisor Pyska?
So I think switching to the webinar mode will get rid of a lot of the distractions and accidents that happen and make for a smoother and maybe a more efficient meeting. But just to be clear, that attendees could still call in from the phone line, correct?
Definitely.
And also participants would be able to ask and give public input?
Yes, yeah, so there would be like a little bit of a cork to figure out for phone participants because they still wouldn't be able to raise their hand. But given how many phone participants we typically have in the Zoom meeting, that wouldn't be too complicated to kind of offer them an unmute request one by one. Additionally, there is a, there are controls on the, for phone participants to both raise their hand and unmute themselves. They can use, I believe it's star six to unmute themselves and star nine to raise their hand. I might mix those up, but it's star six and star nine, I do know those, so one does one thing, one does the other.
Right, so you know, as we're in this model right now for the next few weeks, people can participate just having a telephone.
Yes.
Yes. And attendees couldn't share a video, but if it was something that was deemed appropriate, then they could be promoted to a panelist and then share.
Yes, definitely, we could do that. And I mean, technically we can do that for every part or for every attendee that wants to speak. It's just, it adds a little bit of lag time between getting them in, making them a panelist, waiting for that, you know, that little transition, waiting for their Zoom to unload, they probably have to check their audio again. So it, we could do that, but it might be cumbersome to do it for everyone.
Right, but just in the off chance that somebody was giving input and wanted to share something, that option is available.
Definitely.
Yeah, so with the list, does it show the list of attendees or participants or is that list going to be blank? So, because it won't show up as a participant in the grid, but I'm just wondering if it's still possible to see, be able to identify who is on the call.
Right, so as an attendee, when you're looking at the Zoom, like that Zoom window, like what we're working at now, you would only see panelists who have their videos on. And then you would have a count of how many panels are actually active in the Zoom meeting, of panels and attendees. So if, like in this case here, we have maybe, maybe 10 co-hosts set up right now, only, let's see, we got seven of us sharing a video. So we, you'd have seven heads with a count of 10 panelists, so it's a little little varied for panelists, because the panelists, yourself, the board, staff, they would see all of the panels in the Zoom meeting.
Right.
Whether or not they have their videos on.
But an attendee, would they be able to open the participants window and just see the list, the name, the list of names, no?
There's no list for them.
Okay.
Just that count, that's all they get, if, the count and then who's sharing their video, that's all they get to see.
Any further questions from the board? So I think that the most important thing i- in my mind is that the public continuously gets to see us, that we try to replicate what a normal board chamber experience is like where we would be sitting at a dais and they can sit down in their seats and they can watch us, because there's body language as well as the comments that we make that I think is important in how we're conducting ourselves in any of these meetings, whether it's virtual or live, and so I think that the grid view being available and having all supervisors at all times being viewable is important to me so that the public really gets the full feel of each agenda item that we're going through. I know that we've all had some personal experiences with Zoom that we're grateful for what you do Jake, because you jump right on top of these things when they pop up, but the fact is, they pop up. And I think that the majority of the obscene stuff that has occurred has been in video versus sound. And so, you know, there's always a risk in anybody that we unmute, but at the same time, there's always a risk in anybody that comes in the boardroom and talks to us as well. They could say something that is absolutely moving and inspiring or they could say something very random. And I think that that is just a part of a public meeting and that's never going to change and we can't stop that, but the obscene stuff, we need to try our best to try to limit. I will say that my first experience with the webinar Zoom, you're right, you used the word lonely and it does feel somewhat lonely, but once you go through one meeting and you utilize the process that's there to raise your hand, you get called on, it's no different than what you're dealing with now except you don't see all of the attendees. You get somebody that submits to you to unmute, you click unmute, it's very easy now that you don't have to click on participants and then find a way to raise your hand, it's all right there at the main menu, which I hope Zoom will eventually update their normal stuff and recognize that raising a hand is really important, they should put that on the main menu. But that's them, not me. But I think that eventually, after even one experience, you recognize that I didn't lose anything from the experience by having it be done this way. I've experienced it at a couple state level meetings, I've experienced it over at the city of Clear Lake where they use the Zoom webinar. I've never felt alienated from participating at all and I was able to hear it loud and clear just like we are right here right now, just a little bit of a different layout, but I think the control mechanisms to ensure that it stays as professional as possible, I think is important.
Yeah, priority right there.
Alright Supervisor Pyska, you have something else?
I did have one more question, so you mentioned that the low tier for the licensing for 100 users is a hundred dollars, is that monthly? Is that annual? And I think that we would have to go up to the next tier of 500 just to build in the capacity for the users that we might anticipate, to always make sure that we have the room.
Right, so I, I think Carol might be checking the prices right there, I have them.
Yes, if I could speak to the pricing, so, so it's my understanding that presently our IT department pays about seventeen dollars a month for all of, all county Zoom use, is that right Jake?
Like the board, that yes.
For county Zoom use, okay.
Seventy, seventy or seventeen?
Seventeen, one seven.
One seven.
So if we upgrade to Zoom webinar, the cost would be forty-nine ninety-eight per month, so it does go up. That's up to the hundred participants, if we go up to 500 participants, the cost is about a hundred and thirty-three dollars a month. And the question I would have for you Jake, I think I've seen this happen on the spot, a hundred, we haven't had a time yet where we had a hundred participants, but we would welcome that. We've gotten close in the eighties. So Jake, what if we were in a situation where we're tipping that hundred balance? Could we upgrade on the spot? I think I've experienced that when I was in other webinars, it got overloaded.
We might be able to, in that situation, the webinar license is associated um, the webinar license is associated with the account with pretty much a checkbox in the uh in in the user field when we go into our admin console. Uh, so they might have already had the 500 license um on their account and they just kind of associated with that person right then and there. We would I I would expect a delay in requesting the 500 um licensing and everything being approved and Zoom doing what they need to do to uh kind of start charging us and allow that access to our account.
All right. Thank you. So then no, probably not.
I don't think so, but I'm I'm not sure.
So as I look back over the time we've been in Zoom, though, I can't think of a time where we tipped 80 by much, but it's certainly possible. We've been getting so much more participation during these days.
There there has been when um when we had a couple of times when Granicus broke and uh those, that was the instance where we had more Zoom participants, when we were telling people to join Zoom to see this, to see the board supervisors meeting, not just to participate with it. Uh, that that was uh when we had a larger, way early on too, when when uh all the COVID stuff, the masking was really um controversial. So uh that was, that was during the heavier times, yeah.
And and I would say, and please, uh, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, and I love the fact that we have staff that want to be involved and listen in to the conversation, but we have a lot of staff that on a regular basis sign into Zoom, but never participate at all. And I think we need to help lead them in the right places where they can listen uh but not take up a spot on Zoom so that we don't have to breach that 100. Uh, because I I love the fact that our staff wants to be up to date on what's happening and what decisions are being made. But if you're not participating, we have other options uh to ensure that that uh that is available for them, like Granicus itself on our website or Facebook or other uh other means. Uh, so I think that we need, we need to try to uh inform and educate our staff on the other ways to do it so that only those that are going to speak and only those that are uh presenting and the public who wants to speak will be uh on the Zoom uh account.
Any other comments from supervisors on this? Supervisor Crandall? Who's experiencing a mute issue?
My my computer kicked me off on accident, so I had to get back on. Uh, just a question about um, I know it goes from either 16 right now that we're currently paying um to $49, which is about $30 worth of variance. Just want to make sure, and I and I'm confident that we can um ensure that the funds to be paid for the higher amount could be utilized by uh some of the CARES Act funding or something of that nature. So it's not a burden that's on the taxpayers or something like that. I just wanted to ask that or see if that's something that we're looking at.
Yes, it could, as long as CARES Act funds are in play. And and hopefully there will be more of that sort of funding coming our way, but yes, the answer.
Okay. All right, thank you.
And and my my response to you Supervisor Crandall is, let's say we do the 500 participants at $133. Uh, over the course of 10 months, just to keep the math easy, that's only $1,300 for the year. And so add another two months, we're looking at $1,500 or something like that. And then have a be efficient, uh, because it for for the public's sake, it's good for us to be efficient in what we're doing because we don't want to waste their time. We don't need them to see things that they don't need to see or hear things that they don't need to hear. Uh, and so I think for that price, uh, we're not looking to break any bank whatsoever.
Thank you for that. And I just hear the taxpayers in my mind saying, wait.
Right, right. Any other comments before we open it up for the public? Supervisor Simon, you unmuted?
No, I just think that it is at this time, just an education process. Um, you know, I'd like to hear what the public says. Uh, I know our staff, Carol and Matthew and everybody have been working on this for a while. Um, I appreciated the opportunity to look at this, uh, you know, while I was chair. And I think starting out the new year um and taking those next steps uh with Zoom is a good opportunity for us. So, uh, you know, I I am in favor uh of moving forward with it. Uh, just, I think the timing is right. And ultimately, uh, as we've all said on this board, including myself last week, participation, as much open participation as what we want to do, and if we see problems or communication problems as we go down the road, we'll work on fixing those. So thank you, staff, for working on this, Carol and everybody. And I think it's a good rollout opportunity here for the first of the year and for the new chair.
Let's go ahead and open up the Zoom room, Jake.
All right. Okay, so I've sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name. I've never done that on camera before.
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. My name is, my name is Betsy Khan. And and I don't think any of you, perhaps Mr. Runke, but um the rest of you will probably not be terribly surprised to learn that I would not be in favor of going to this other model. The reason being that as a member of the public, it is very important to me to be able to see who else is in fact paying attention to the board meetings. The ability to understand how many staff people are in attendance, whether they're actually closely watching this or not, makes a big difference because the number of subjects that come up that I can then turn to, let's say Crystal Marketan and say, oh, did you happen to notice when Dr. Pace said XYZ? This is something that we need to pay attention to. That facilitates my interaction with everybody in the government. And I do not use that interaction frivolously, as you probably all understand. It's for very, for the purpose of informing and educating the public on our community radio station, among other outlets. Um, also, the uh, I wanted to comment, Bruno, you know, you couldn't have given me a a greater a spark for my response, although I was kind of starting to really debate with myself whether I should even say anything. But your comment, I thought this was just amazing when you said, well, there are times where we don't need them to see anything that they don't need to see or or hear anything that they don't need to hear. The Ralph M. Brown Act intent says us to know and what is not good for us to know. We hold that sovereignty and expect you to be able to provide that openness to us. Now, this is something that I can hear Jake going, oh, this would be so much easier because then we wouldn't have all this interference. I haven't been a religious follower of the supervisors' hearings, but since you's converted to Zoom earlier this uh last year, I I have found this to be tremendously helpful. I I pay close attention to um the folks that are involved when a particular hot bit, a button subject comes up. Uh, I I give significant attention to the con- the the content of your agendas every week, and I talk about them on our Sunday afternoon radio program, try to get people involved, let them know how a particular action might affect their community. So to me, having the openness is worth the interference. I don't know if somebody has put something obscene on your video screen, but we're all adults and I think we can probably handle the shock while Jake gets a grip and takes it off. That um having the the comfort on your side to have more control sacrifices the benefit of the purpose of the Ralph M. Brown Act. So thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, Betsy, for your comment. And and just to uh clarify, the idea is not to control what's being said, but obscene, which has happened, pornographic imagery being displayed during our meetings. I don't care what the Ra- the the Brown Act says or any other uh law, that is not what we are here for. Uh, that is absolutely um inappropriate and unacceptable. As far as people saying whatever they need to say, uh, they they have the ability to say those things, but if they start saying obscene things as well, I think we would opt them already if it was in a meeting here and we would do the same thing. Uh, but some of the stuff that we've seen is just inappropriate and it would not halt or prohibit people from expressing themselves uh like they would in a normal meeting. I think that there needs to be the, by basically, we've married our uh public meetings with the internet and the internet is lawless. And so we need to be able to build some form of platform to allow us to do what we're supposed to do and follow the laws that we're asked to follow by making it an open public meeting, but also prohibiting those types of obscene situations that typically do not ever occur. I don't know one time that anybody can recall pornographic imagery being brought up in a public meeting in real life. Uh, this is a a different situation and we need to figure out how to handle that. Uh, and I agree, uh, we should be as open and transparent and uh available as possible, but that is not, in my mind, what open and transparent and available means, that uh people can do that for our meetings. Uh, and it distracts from the the true business that we're doing here for the people. So I think that uh it, I I respectfully agree and disagree with your comment. Uh, I think that uh we we would not change or uh prohibit any kind of expression whatsoever.
Supervisor Price, I saw you unmute.
Um, yes, and I I understand as well, Betsy, that it, I like to see who else is participating in the meeting. Um, but we can't see who's um watching through Granicus or on Facebook. Uh, so we we only have access to the people that we can see via Zoom. Um, so it doesn't really give us an accurate count of who is participating in the meeting or who's watching the meeting. In the days of the um meetings being in the boardroom, the understanding was all the the staff and department heads were likely watching in their offices and would come down to the boardroom when they had something to to speak on. So it is um understood that everybody's watching the meetings, they just may not be in Zoom. And so if we go to the webinar experience where we're we're not be able to see um who each attendant i- is, we still understand that they're following and watching.
And so I I was just told that we have our videographer, Sam Houston, who would like to uh make a comment.
Oh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to um just point or make a a few points of clarity. One is that when viewers are watching on the social media, Facebook, um or Granicus, that they are seeing a delayed version. So it is anywhere from 15 milliseconds to 30 second delay. So that doesn't um, that doesn't give them the kind of time to be able to respond. They're responding behind an item. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention so that we're just, we're we we're just aware of that. Um, and then uh the other item was um just so, and maybe um um Ms. Grant could um could address this, is as long as we're seen as as we're providing transparency, which it sounds like we're doing, but it's just a point um that that comes up as I'm as I'm thinking about this and looking at some of the comments that are being made. That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Ms. Grant.
Um, it's getting very difficult to hear everybody and I'm just upstairs, so um. I- in terms of security, I I think the point is that if someone attempts to take over, disrupt a proceeding by running pornography, the system will give you a ready and facile means of precluding that, stopping it at the outset rather than allowing it to run for a couple of minutes until until it can be uh controlled and removed. Obviously, the essence of the Brown Act is transparency and public participation. So no facet of this system may in any way compromise that. But to prevent disruption of the meeting is a separate analysis and one that certainly someone hijacking a meeting to to show a porno reel would be considered to be doing.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Uh, let's go ahead and open it up again for public comments, since we didn't finish, just in case there's more comments.
All right. I have uh sent another unmute request out to the Zoom floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name.
Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board. Uh, I believe that we are looking for direction um for the, it doesn't actually, yeah, possible direction to staff. Um, direction to staff, uh, any comments? Sounded like everybody seemed to be okay with that. Do we want to talk about the capacity? Do we want to aim for the 100? Do we want to aim for the 500?
It would be staff's recommendation that we aim for the 100 at this point. And, you know, we continuously evaluate. If it looks like we're gonna tip that balance, uh, we can absolutely increase it. That would be within my approval authority.
Absolutely within your authority. Okay, I'm I'm good with that. And Jake, thank you very much for the presentation. I love the tag of Zoom room in the background.
So, Mr. Chair, just to clarify then, you're directing us to convert to the Zoom webinar for your next regular meeting, which would be the 26th, yes?
Or I would say at the most convenient next meeting, rather than trying to rush you and make sure that it happens at the next meeting.
That's perfect. And if it's an experience you don't want after you have it, guess what? We can always go back.
And Jake, I'd like to see if you could possibly, but and whoever, uh, but possibly urge uh the webinar group or whoever if wants the once, and if this passes, to uh maybe uh allow the attribute for people to be seen on the list of who's present or something like that, just uh because just giving that type of feedback may may give them this incentive to maybe do another version that allows you to see who's in attendance. Because in reality, when it goes to the meetings in the board chambers, you can see who else is in the room, at least. You may not know their names or whatever, but you can see if uh John Doe is there and they're and they're gonna say, but it, and that's as a public uh attendee. So I'm just giving that recommendation either way, just because of what I've heard and and um about seeing who else is in the room with us. That's all.
Definitely, I could I could make that. I mean, I could uh send that over to Zoom and um I I I think that would be something that wouldn't be too too uh obtuse to ask for. So um, we'll definitely put that uh out there and see what comes back.
All right.
Uh, Ms. Chair, I have one final comment here, uh, just a recommendation, uh, maybe between uh the chair and Carol uh that and Matthew uh that we look to get. Obviously, we're making a change. Change is always uh tough for folks. We could definitely get some messaging out from us on the change we're gonna be making and, you know, you know, those types of things, more of an education thing. Um, I know last year we were doing uh some notices out uh from the board and from the chair, and I think this would be a good start to do that, to communicate with our public uh as we start 2021. So just a suggestion.
I I appreciate the suggestion.
You bet.
Okay. Thank you for the conversation, everybody. And thank you, Jake, again, for the presentation and all the work you do to make our meetings look smooth and professional. Uh, let's go ahead and I think we've gotten all of our items done. So let's go ahead and uh we have our assessment hearings starting at 1:30. Uh, let's go ahead and take a 30 minute lunch. Uh, is that uh okay with everybody? Just come back at 1:30, just as our agenda asks us to do? And then we'll go ahead and do closed session and um assessment hearings at that time. Ms. Hutchinson, you had a comment?
I just gave you the thumbs up.
I saw, I just saw a finger. I didn't see the thumb. We see everybody at 1:30. I will say next time I um will ask for a little bit longer time. Um, because 30 minutes and expecting everything to be up and running already by now is just a high expectation and not enough time for everybody to enjoy their lunch. So I apologize for that.
I did run a little bit.
Isn't that your normal um uh pace? A a step up from the brisk walk.
Okay, so we are now live. So when are we ready?
Are you good?
Uh, I don't think she can. Uh, she is.
Can you hear me now?
There is.
And I assume Anita's got her audio on?
I'm present.
Perfect. So all yours, Mr. Chair.
Okay. And it looks like all supervisors are back, so we're ready to roll. All right, welcome back. We will be reconvening the board of supervisors' meeting and we will be uh convening as the Lake County Board of Equalization. Our um first assessment, uh, real quick, Ms. Grant, I apologize, but I I need some guidance. Uh, even the ones that are withdrawn, do we need to take action? Even the ones that are withdrawn, do we need to take action on, or do we just need to make a statement that it was withdrawn?
I think you can just simply do a statement that those are withdrawn, the stipulations your board will have to approve. And the, and if you have any questions about waivers as to time and extensions, you can certainly ask those. You don't have to take action on those either. And I believe you still have one matter that you'll take up subsequently.
Correct. Thank you very much for your guidance.
If, if at any time you want me to say, to review anything procedurally, please just ask, otherwise I won't intrude.
I won't be a stranger. Okay. Item 8.1, consideration of the following assessment appeal of application number 19-2018, Dogon, California LLC. This assessment appeal has been withdrawn, therefore has been settled. And so we'll go ahead and move forward and go to item number 8.2. Approve stipulation on the following assessment appeal applications. We'll start with A, number 24-2018, Ross and Evelyn Ireland. And let's go ahead and, Mr. Ford, would you like to provide us the information of the stipulation and see how the board moves on it?
Okay, so the assess for Ireland, the assess role value was 870,659. The applicant's opinion of value was 800,000. We corrected the assessed value to that and that's what the stipulation is for, for Ireland.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, let's go ahead and Jake, can we please open up the Zoom room to see if anybody has any comments on that stipulation?
All right.
Bringing her back in. I've sent a unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name. Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring this back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
It would just simply be a motion to approve the stipulation as presented by the assessor reporter for Ross and Evelyn Ireland, Ireland for parcel 04327220000.
Appreciate the guidance. And that's exactly what I expected to hear. All right, we have a second. Okay. And a motion by Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Crandall. And Johanna, if we can get a roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall. I didn't hear that.
He, I unmuted him and then he remuted.
I think it's a yes.
Yes.
Okay. Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And then item D of 8.2 is the stipulation on the following assessment appeal, number 25-2018, Anthony and Lori Spurling. And again, Mr. Ford, if you could provide a quick presentation on that stipulation.
Sure. So the assessor role value was 873831. The applicant's opinion of value was 750,000, which we did accept and corrected the assessed value.
Okay, thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
No.
Being none. Jake, if we could please open up the Zoom room, see if we have any public comment on this item. All right. I have, I sent an unmute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name. Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the assessment appeal 25-2018, Anthony and Lori Spurling.
Do we want to approve the stipulation versus the assessment appeal?
Oh, the prove the stipulation.
And Anthony and Lori Spurling. Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, a motion by Supervisor Scott and second by Supervisor Pyska. Johanna, roll call, please.
Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Yes.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. We're going to move on to item 8.3. Accept request for withdrawal on the following assessment appeal applications, number 33-2018 Garcia. And as it states in the item itself, it has been withdrawn and settled. So we'll go ahead and move on to item 8.4. Continue the following assessment appeal applications, number 21-2018, Safeway Incorporated. And B, number 22-2018, Safeway Incorporated. And C, number 38-2018, Misha M. Roth. I hope I said that correctly. And we'll, we'll stop right there and go ahead and, is it just a, do we need approval from the board to extend the timeframe for the appeal? Or is it just a formality to say that it has been extended, Ms. Grant, I'm asking?
I think that really at this point, your board can approve the, the continuance, if you like, because this was a scheduled hearing and you can approve it. You may want to inquire of the assessor reporter to make sure that it will either be resolved or settled or taken up again by your board before the statutory time to decide these appeals has run.
Okay, Ms. Grant. Uh, Mr. Ford, do you have any comments on this to help us understand what the future process is for this?
Sure, absolutely. So it's probably easiest, the best, go, you know, kind of just one by one. There's about four of them here. So we'll, we'll start with, and I'm probably going to mispronounce the last name, but it's Roth, I think is how you pronounce it. We actually have received, Johanna received an email regarding, and David Schwinger, my department received, that their intention was to basically withdraw it. They basically, we do not have something in, in house yet. So that's why they're going to be extended a time. When it comes to H&amp;S, we.
We'll get to H&amp;S since that's going to be a further discussion. And so we're only, we're in the Safeways, Ms. Grant.
Okay, okay. So then the Safeways, both Safeways, they've supplied a waiver with us. The extension is basically because they've supplied us with information. It's basically calculations. We have to decipher and, and check their methodology and see if it's acceptable. And basically going to, why it has to do with perfrom property. And so we take, we have to take some time. We've only received it in the last week and a half. So it's going to take some time to do that and possibly further increase with them. They'll agreeable to that because they know they just sent it to us. Once we digest it and everything's okay, well, we'll proceed one way or another, either with further increase or otherwise.
Do you know when the first one has been extended to?
I can tell you what the waiver says. The waiver on both is not a waiver of time. It's just a waiver and agreement for postponement of hearing on assessment appeals application. Was signed, doesn't actually have a date on, actually January 6th of this year. So it, it has no set time. It just waivers it out for two-year period. We, by the fact that we've already received a big chunk of the information, I don't anticipate it going that much further. It'll take us some time to digest it. Once we digest it, we're going to have to see if we need additional information. If we do, it still might end up at appeal because it might just be a disagreement on methodology. But we'll have to see at that point, once we digest it. So it's hard to say exactly when it's going to, when we're going to come back to you, but let's see what we, what they provided, so.
Is there's no date? Is there a statute of limitations of how long we can extend it?
The waiver, the waiver extends it back. Let me actually go back to that. The waiver, I think, extends on the actual writing within the extended time period, which is any period of time remaining between the date of execution of this agreement, expiration of the two-year period plus 180 days from the date of receipt of the assessment appeals board of the termination notice. That's the language on it. So.
January 6th is the date of receipt?
January 6th of this, of this year.
The 180 days goes from there.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments on those three items before we move on to H&amp;S from the board? Okay, I'll open it up to the public as well. Any questions or comments on those three items, A, B, and C? Sent a mute request out to the Zoom room floor. If you'd like to make a comment, please unmute and state your first and last name. All right. Thank you, Jake. Let's go ahead and bring it back to the board and let's move on to item D, number 31, or assessment appeal, number 31-2018, H&amp;S Energy. And I believe that we should have somebody representing H&amp;S. I don't see them here. Are they here?
No, we've, we've got it actually waived to extend.
Oh, is there a waiver to extend that one as well?
It was signed on, it was signed on 1/7/21. When I, to be perfectly honest, at least the agenda I just pulled, at, at that grouped into 8.4, in addition to the growth, H&amp;S and both of the Safeways, all within the same item. At least that's what I showed.
Yeah, it was all in the same, continue the following, but there was no attachment with the extension that was added on. So we were, we were thinking that we were going to have a discussion on this one.
Not a problem. Yeah, I noticed that on, on some of the attachments that they seem to be missing waivers. I had Dave get with Johanna today and I actually have it in my, in my possession here. I'm looking at a copy of it.
And again, we're looking at 180 days maximum past the 1/7 date that you received the waiver.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to see if this, it's a different version of a waiver. But I think it's still called out, I think, 180, 180 or 120. Then 20 days of the application. This actually calls out 120, but it is a different version of a waiver. But I, I also don't think it's possibly even going to go that far, so.
And I, I know that with the process, we have a two-year process and if we extend further than the two-year process, then it automatically downgrades to whatever they're offering that the value should be. And I just want to make sure that we don't accidentally, if the, I want to make sure the waiver is correct so that we don't put ourselves in a position where we're just approving something by default.
Yeah, this particular waiver calls out 120 where the previous one called out 180. But it has been submitted and it is dated 1/7. So at least according to what it's calling out here, it's 120.
Okay. Well, that looks like that covers all of the assessment appeals. I just want to check in real quick with Ms. Grant. Are we good to move forward? Everything seems to be in place to, for the extensions, the approval of stipulations and withdrawals. Are we good?
Yes, sir. I think so. The two-year, I believe it's a two-year statute of limitations under our revenue and taxation code. Our rich board can correct me if I'm wrong on this citation, which the two years runs from the time the application, the assessment appeal application is filed, and then the additional time is pursuant to the terms of the waiver which we just described. So as long as the, as long as the waiver is completely comprehensive, then your board should still have sufficient time, as will the assessor recorder, to conclude these.
I just want to ask the board in case there's any question of the process, if you have anything. Seems pretty cut and dry. So that finishes up our 8.4 and that finishes the rest of our agenda, other than our closed session at this moment in time. So we will be going to a breakout room for our close. Thank you very much, guys, for presenting today and we'll see how that, those end up.
Great. Appreciate it. Thanks. Thanks, guys.
Mr. Chair, actually, we'll just remain right here and clear the room and continue closed session right here.
Okay. And let me go ahead and state the agenda items. First, we have 9.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D1, Center for Biological Diversity versus County of Lake Ittle. 9.2, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D1, California Native Plant Society versus County of Lake Ittle. And then we will go out to close, or we will close the room to have closed session.